I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Tom, are there any items to remove or add to the agenda as if I don't know that there already are?
Yes, thank you to Board Member Gerrols for catching something. We are going to need a correction to the minutes for the July 30, 2025 special board meeting, which was related to the construction tour given to the board. The correction is going to be removing Communications Director Holly Deitchman and adding the RMS Principal Terrapi attack, as far as who was attendance for that meeting. That'll be the correction there. The second item, Board Member Swisicki has requested to have item 5.7 under consent agenda voted on separately. Did I, is it accurate?
Yep.
Yep, perfect. So when we get to that point, I've already asked Steve to make sure that he reminds all of us when we get to that portion of our agenda to not read 5.7 into the rest of consent. And so there'll be two votes on consent.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions on that from anybody? You're good? Seems like we're good. Okay. Tonight, we're celebrating the opening day of the Early Childhood Center at Alice Gusterson Elementary School. Yesterday, we welcomed our bitty Bulldogs to the building for their first day. Here to tell us more about the program is Paulette Ali, Early Childhood Coordinator and Assistant Principal. Welcome, Paulette.
Thank you. Good evening. As he said, my name is Paulette Ali. I have the privilege of serving as the Early Childhood Coordinator for our district. Our early childhood program is housed at Alice Gusterson Elementary School under the leadership of Principal Kristen. Yesterday, we opened our doors and welcomed 142 three- and four-year-olds into our early childhood wing. This was a special moment because our classrooms are mixed age, meaning our threes and our four-year-olds learn side by side, building friendships and developing skills together. Three-year-olds join us through our community lottery, which runs from early November through late January. And while the lottery is open to both ages, most of our four-year-old spaces are filled by returning students. Children have already spent a year growing with us and are ready for even greater challenges. Our early childhood program is rich in history. It began with a small team of dedicated educators in one or two classrooms that focused solely on supporting students with special education needs. These pioneers were strong advocates for early education, laying the groundwork for growth and innovation. Over the years, their dedication has helped build a fully robust program with a deeply rich tradition, supporting at-risk English language learners and general education students, engaging in a developmentally appropriate play-based curriculum while maintaining a profound respect by our community. The legacy envisioned from many years ago lives on in every classroom and every team member today. This year, our early childhood program is thriving with seven classrooms, offering both morning and afternoon sessions. We have 11 blended sections, meaning classrooms that include both community students and students with identified needs, supported through an IEP. We also have three instructional classrooms designed for our most complex little learners, ensuring that every child gets the right support in the right environment. Our students are surrounded by an exceptional team. Our early childhood teachers are not only experts in early childhood education, but also endorsed in early childhood special education and English as a Second Language. They are supported by an incredible group of paraprofessionals, as well as a talented related services team that includes speech and language pathologists, a social worker, an occupational therapist, and a physical therapist. Together, they bring both expertise and heart to everything they do. In our classrooms, learning is both joyful and intentional. Every day, students engage in at least 45 minutes of free choice experiences. They build towers in the block center, role-play in the kitchen, explore math, literacy, and science activities, or create art or new letters in the writing center. All of these activities are tied to our monthly theme that is aligned with the Illinois Early Learning and Development Standards. We have two large group learning times each day, one focused on common instructional practices of pre-literacy and pre-numeracy, and another dedicated to language and literacy, which focuses on vocabulary, comprehension, sequencing, and concepts tied to our unit plans. Our three speech pathologists not only serve students with communication needs, but also co-teach in blended classrooms to support the child, every child's communication development. Our social worker plays a key role in helping students develop social skills, emotional regulation, and positive relationships. She supports both our students and our families. All aspects of our lessons are aligned with those early learning standards, and we track growth using a tool called Teaching Strategies Gold. We share progress with families three times a year, similar to what families experience at the elementary level and beyond. Our OT and PT collaborate each month on a motor group that blends movement skills like balance, jumping, striking, and kicking with our monthly learning theme. In the spring, we celebrate these skills at our culminating event in partnership with Special Olympics Illinois Unified Programming. Students rotate through fun motor skill stations and are recognized with awards presented by local law enforcement. We've had officers from Batavia, Geneva, and Kanan County join us, and last year, Batavia's comfort dog, Officer River, brought even more smiles. Beyond serving our enrolled students, our early childhood program supports the entire community. We offer monthly developmental screenings to identify children who may need support. For the past three years, we've partnered with the Batavia Apartments to host screenings on-site for families who may have difficulty attending at our center. We also collaborate closely with the state of Illinois's Early Intervention Program, ensuring children transitioning from birth to three services enter our program without a gap in support if they still qualify. We provide walk-in speech and language services for children with mild to moderate delays, and since 2022, we reserved at-risk spots in every blended classroom. These spots are for children with certain life factors that put them at greater risk for entering school with delays. By offering these opportunities, we can give these students a strong start before kindergarten. The Early Childhood Center is truly a place of celebration, learning, and growth. It is a community where students are honored for their unique strengths, where educators collaborate with passion, and where families are welcomed as partners. Every day, we see growth in language, in skills, and confidence. This year is already off to a wonderful start, and I am so proud to work alongside this talented team to provide our youngest learners with the very best foundation for success. Investing in early childhood education plants the seeds for lifelong growth, and the Board of Education's commitment to these learners transforms futures. Our program and families thank you for your dedication and support.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Paulette. Holly, do we have any speakers wishing to address the board?
We do not.
Okay. Move on to item 4.2, BPS Partners. Drew. I've seen you for a bit, so you got a fancy new haircut, I see.
I did. It's the, I'm still in summer Drew mode.
Summer Drew mode.
It's been hot out. This is actually kind of nice. But yeah, long time no see. It's been a while. First of all, right off the bat, great start to the school year, thanks to all of our district staff that worked their butts off over summer break to get everyone ready to welcome back our kids. It's always great to start the school year on a positive note, and there were overall positive vibes across the district. I think a lot of you were able to see that. So listen, I've got to know many of you over the past several years, either through our mutual work in the district, because I've had your kids in class, or because we're neighbors. But in case some of you don't know much about me, I thought the start of the school year might be a good time to reintroduce myself. My name is Drew Ray, and I'm proud to be both an educator in Batavia and the president of the Batavia Education Association. This is my 13th year teaching social studies in the district. This year, I'm exclusively teaching AP American Government and Politics, excuse me. So this is actually the first time in my career I'm not teaching freshmen, which I'm a little, little bit sad about. My family and I moved here in November of 2020 so that our kids could attend school in BPS 101. My son Davis is in first grade. This is over at HC Storm, and his little sister Leona will be starting kindergarten next year. One of my favorite parts about teaching in this district is getting to work with everyone on our staff, and I know it sounds cliche, but it's inspiring to be surrounded by such dedicated people. It reminds me why I love public education. I tell you all this because, like all of you, I care deeply about the success of this district. And I spend probably too much time thinking about how we've progressed as a district since my first year in the fall of 2013. I've seen a lot, as have most of you, ups and downs, highs and lows, best of times, worst of times, everything in between. As I expressed to our membership last Tuesday at our general meeting, I believe we're moving in the direction that we need to be moving. While the speed of progress can be frustrating, it's important to sometimes take a step back and reflect on that progress, even though that can be difficult when there are still things that we could be and should be doing better. And that's okay. It's something we should never lose sight of. This summer, I was very fortunate to be able to spend some much-needed time with my family, which I hope everyone in this room is able to do as well, reconnect with some amazing friends, and spend time collaborating with fellow union members across the state. For example, every summer, some of our BEA officers, as well as those that are stepping into leadership roles within our local, attend the IEA Summer Leadership Academy in Bloomington. This year, at a roundtable for local presidents, we received some sage words of advice from our IEA Vice President Carl Gakey. In response to a question regarding how to bring members with varying viewpoints together in order to tackle a common goal, he responded with a question, which I'm going to pose to all of you now. Which is better, inhaling or exhaling? I'll give you a moment to think about it. I had to think about it. I was, inhaling, exhaling? It's a trick question, all right? You can't have one without the other. What he meant was that a union as large as the Illinois Education Association naturally brings together people with a wide variety of opinions and interests related to our profession. Working together is like breathing. Inhale and exhale may be different, but you can't survive without both. Success thrives when each person gives and receives in balance, keeping the team alive and moving forward. So while we may hold different viewpoints on how we do things, what must unite us are our shared values. That simple but powerful point hit me right here and made me think about us, Batavia Public School District. We may approach challenges from different perspectives, but we have many more values that are the same. Unfortunately for us, BPS 101 has a clear set of values that all the stakeholders can stand behind. It's on the district website. It only took me like 20 seconds to find it. They are collaboration, equity, excellence, innovation, integrity, lifelong learning, and respect. Of course, there will always be differences in how we put these values into practice, but these principles should serve as the blueprint for our work together as a district. Our students deserve nothing less than a continued commitment that every stakeholder will act in good faith toward the common goal of providing all of our students with a high-quality public education. Finally, Happy Early Labor Day. Remember, Labor Day is a day to celebrate the working people who built this nation, and solidarity is how we will protect what we've built. Speaking of solidarity, the BEA sends all the positive vibes in the world to the Naperville Unit Education Association as they continue to fight for a fair contract. Solidarity forever with our brothers and sisters in the BESPA. Go Bulldogs. Good night. Good luck.
Thanks, Drew. All right, BESPA President Jillian, how are you today?
Good evening. I'm doing good.
Good.
Do you want to go ahead and put up my pictures? So I'm going to take a few minutes and introduce our new BESPA board. We have a whole new board, and so I kind of want to give you pictures of all of us. Mine are kind of fun. So go ahead. So this is my family, obviously. So I'm excited to introduce myself as your new BESPA president. I currently work at Rotolo Middle School as an administrative specialist handling all things financial and athletic. This is my first, my third year with the district. Last year, I served as BESPA Board Treasurer and was also part of the negotiating committee for our new contract. I have lived in Batavia for six years with my husband of 21 years and my two sons, who are 19 and 16. My oldest is studying electrical engineering at Bradley University, and my youngest is entering his junior year at Batavia High School. I am an animal lover and what feels like a zoo at home. I have two dogs, two cats, and a tortoise. I also love to travel, and I'm a huge Disney fan. Okay, if you can go to the next one. So this is Laura Markort. She's obviously the older one there. She is our new Vice President of BESPA, currently serving her first term on the board. She's excited to continue the great work already established and to contribute new ideas to help strengthen the union. As a Batavia resident for 25 years, Laura and her husband of 28 years have raised three children in the Batavia school system. Their two oldest have graduated from Creighton University and the University of Kentucky, while their youngest is attending the University of Louisville. Over the years, she has been in the Batavia school district, seen the Batavia school district from many perspectives. As a dedicated parent volunteer, substitute teacher, kindergarten enrichment teacher, contract negotiations committee member, and early childhood para, although she was once considering her ECC, her forever home, a district change has led her to a new opportunity as a campus monitor at Rotolo Middle School this upcoming school year. Okay, one more. This is my secretary Sharon Watowski, and Sharon has been in the district for 23 years. She has spent seven years at Storm School and the past 16 years at Rotolo Middle School, working in various programs including ILP, DO, and now eighth-grade general education. In addition to her role in the classroom, she also coaches seventh-grade volleyball. She has lived in Batavia for 34 years, who has been, and with her husband, who has been retired for 11 years. They have two sons, Ty, a data scientist, and Cody, who works in logistics. As a family, they enjoy visiting breweries, attending Cubs games, and golfing together. Okay, one more. And this is my treasurer, Kristin Gorski. She has been with the district since August of 2021. As a paraprofessional at JBN, before moving to Rotolo Middle School, where she now works as a registrar in the student services, a role she truly enjoys. Kristin has lived in Batavia for over 20 years with her husband, Doug, and her three sons, Jake, Andrew, and Jackson. They have, they also have a dog named Oreo. In their free time, she enjoys watching sports, especially the White Sox, traveling, reading, and relaxing with good Netflix series. Our BESPA board is excited to hit the ground running. The BESPA board is pleased to share some wonderful things we have been working on. So if you can go to the next one. Thank you. So the first thing is building connections. The union board's fresh perspective and commitment to open dialogue. The newly-elected BESPA union board is bringing a fresh perspective, renewed energy, and a strong focus on collaboration. We recognize the real progress happens when communication is open, respectful, and consistent, not just with our union, but across all areas of the district. Our goal is to strengthen the relationships and build meaningful connections with our BESPA union members, our BEA partners, the Board of Education, and the district administration. By fostering open dialogue, we hope to create a culture where every voice is heard, concerns are addressed with transparency, and teamwork drives positive change. As we move forward, we are committed to being accessible, responsive, and proactive in advocating for our members while also supporting the broader goals of our school and community. Together, we can ensure that all staff feels valued, supported, and empowered. We also have shared key concepts with our union on it. We got a new contract, so we're very excited about that. So one of the BESPA board's top priorities is keeping members informed about the most recent and important aspects of the new contract. Transparency, again, in communication ensures that everyone understands their rights, benefits, and opportunities under the current agreement. Our goal is to ensure members are empowered with their knowledge and supported in navigating these terms of our contract. We also started a new committee. It is our Training and Mentoring Committee, and this newly-formed Training and Mentoring Committee hit the ground running this summer, collaborating with Carrie Rue and her team to ensure a smooth and successful start to the school year. This effort played a key role in preparing meaningful training experiences for support staff during the critical first days. This early collaboration not only laid a solid foundation for the year, but also highlighted the value of open communication and constructive feedback. By working together and learning from each experience, the committee is well-poised to continue enhancing training and mentoring opportunities for our staff moving forward. And then in May, we started, the BESPA board started collaboration with our new, well, it's not new, but updated lead campus monitor job description. And so we began developing a more accurate and detailed job description for lead campus monitors. Through monthly meetings with administration and with valuable input from principals across the schools, along with the current lead campus monitors, we were able to fine-tune the description. We are pleased to report that we are nearly in the completion of the final description for this important role. Moving forward, we plan to continue reviewing and updating all staff, support staff job descriptions over the next year to two years to ensure they accurately reflect the responsibilities and expectations of this position. And then lastly, but not least, collaborating with administration about paraprofessional recruitment and staff solutions. The BESPA board is actively collaborating with district administration to address paraprofessional recruitment and staffing challenges. By working together, we aim to develop effective strategies that attract and retain qualified paraprofessionals, ensuring that students receive the support they need. This partnership focuses on identifying staffing gaps, improving hiring processes, and exploring creative solutions to build a stable, skilled, paraprofessional workforce. Through open dialogue and shared goals, we are committed to creating a positive work environment that benefits both staff and students alike. We are excited about the promising opportunities and positive changes ahead with our new BESPA board this year. The BESPA board wishes all students, staff, and students, families, and staff a successful and rewarding school year. So thank you.
Thank you, Jill. All right, student ambassadors will be here next meeting, so we look forward to having them. Grace Nelson and Kaia Olber at next month's meeting. All right, so next is our consent agenda with a slight modification from what was posted. According to our board policy, we designate a portion of the agenda as consent agenda for those items that usually require extensive discussion before board action. These items are generally routine, recurring, and can be grouped together for efficiency. Steve, would you please take us through the process?
Absolutely. Just a reminder, as previously mentioned, item 5.7 will be voted on after the board votes on the rest of the consent agenda, and we did make some corrections to item 5.2 in those minutes. 5.1 is the approval of our July 22, 2025 meeting minutes. 5.2 is the approval of the July 30, 2025 special meeting, which was the construction tour. 5.3 is our monthly personnel report. 5.4 is our monthly payrolls and bills. 5.5 is the destruction of the closed session recordings from January 23, 2024. 5.6, we had a couple of donations from a local scout pack and Office Depot to JBN and HC Storm. We're appreciative to them. 5.8 is the review of our closed session minutes, and 5.9 is the approval of the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Any questions on the items that remain? Okay, hearing none. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with changes as requested in the minutes in 5.2 and without agenda item 5.7.
So moved.
So moved by Katie.
Second.
Second. Second by Erin. Cindy, please lead us in our roll call vote.
Carol Lyden.
Yes.
Gerrols.
Yes.
Swisicki.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Meadows.
Yes. All right, item 5.7, we will now vote on consent agenda 5.7. Does the board have any questions or comments?
I got questions. Okay, so for the Dennett Myers, we used her last year, correct?
Yes.
And did she work with teachers or adventines?
Both.
And then whoever she worked with, did they give positive feedback on her EL world?
Yeah, we don't gather formal feedback, but the anecdotal feedback that I have is very positive.
How many hours did she work with BPS on the assignment?
A little over 200 hours.
And then how often did she meet with BPS personnel?
I don't know the answer to that exactly, but pretty often, in terms of like my team or overall.
I guess it's overall.
She did a lot during EL. World revolves a lot around the access testing, so there's a lot of upfront work. And then during the month of February, there's a lot of access testing, and they, last year because of new staff, supported that.
For Angie Subman, how many teachers are in their first year?
20.
Second year?
20.
Okay. Of those teachers, how many are veteran teachers versus non-tenure teachers in their fir, in the first year?
I believe they're all tenured teachers that are in BPSU, both cohorts. Is that correct?
It's accurate.
So of those veteran teachers, how many have over 20 years of teaching experience and are within five to seven years of retirement that you know of?
My estimation was around three or four. It's always hard for me to predict people's retirement because it's a little individual for each person, but kind of based on what I know, that's what I came up with.
So I know that our retention is good at 92 percentage, but I think maybe we need to look at having half the slots allotted for tenured teachers because we want to keep those non-tenured teachers. How many teachers reached out to Angie for assistance in their BPSU project?
They're all required to do that.
And this project goes, is it second year only, or is it for the length, the duration of both years?
It's the duration of the program, and then it culminates the September after their two-year commitment where they present their projects.
Did the teachers who sought Angie's feedback give positive reviews of their experience or interaction with her?
Yes, very positive feedback. Most of the feedback that I've received goes, I wasn't really looking forward to that, but it was one of the best things I did.
How many times did Angie meet with teachers face-to-face to help with their projects?
She does a lot of her coaching virtually, so I don't know about face-to-face, but she's working one-on-one with teachers morning, noon, and night, depending on when the teacher can meet.
And how many instructional coaches do we have?
We have four at the elementary, one full-time one at the middle school, and then the equivalent of one FTE at the high school, split between two people.
What are the instructional coaches' responsibilities as far as classroom support?
Well, that's, they're there for teacher learning, and this year, we have really used them and are going to use them for the really important board initiatives and the strategic plan. So our ELA curriculum rollout, and then we have a math rollout that spans all of the middle school and a little bit into the high school, so that's going to be a big part of their work this year.
How many hours did Angie put in last year meeting with the BPSU cohorts? I guess my, maybe another question. So if there's 40 participants, did she meet with each one on average, like an hour, two hours?
I don't know the answer to that, but there's like different phases of the work. So they start by having coaching conversations, then they videotape themselves doing a lesson or a part of a lesson, and then they review that lesson. And because out of their teaching practices is where we want them to draw their action research project for, you know, the rest of the time in BPSU. So I would say it probably depends on the person, too. Some people are really reliant on Angie to kind of guide them through the process. Others are more self-sufficient, but I don't know the answer to that question.
How much did we pay for Angie last year?
It was around the current amount that we're asking for here. $76,000 is what we budgeted for her last year.
We don't know if she was over or under. We don't know if we were over or under.
I didn't go through the bills, but I can do that.
I guess my question is just, if we have, I don't know, and you guys would know the more of the answers, but if I have 40 students, and let's say I reached out to Angie for an hour each student, that's 40 hours a year. And if we have instructional coaches, which the instructional coach is according to top description, is work in various capacities, including supporting teachers and personalized learning, implementing common data protocols, providing professional development, and creating resources for instructional improvement. And Angie's contract says to support educators in their efforts in meaningful reflective of pedagogy. I always get that one wrong. And develop action research projects that have a direct impact on the classrooms. So I feel like the instructional coaches and her are doing the same thing. And I guess it's the BEA contract, do we actually outline what the instructional coaches, how much time they are to give to those teachers in the schools, and how many times have the teachers reached out to the instructional coaches for the work in the schools? And I don't know if you guys would have that answer.
Well, yeah, I mean, for me, this past April 8, we met, I met personally with our instructional coaches, and when we talked about where we'll need their support for this current academic year, this came through CAC and PLEC and our DCC with the literacy rollout that was coming. So we had to really like work hard to realign kind of some of the focal points of what our coaches are doing on their day-to-day operations, including math, actually, I'm sorry. We also have the major math curriculum rollout that you approved. On top of that, the coaches are not only focusing on the heavy lifting under priorities one and two, the coaches are also spending time doing, actually, Raquel, exactly what you're talking about, using the other balanced part of their day on their teacher caseloads, working with teachers who have reached out to them to get assistance on, you know, teaching practices, things they want them to come in and see, et cetera. A variety of the things that you're outlining as to what the coaches would be doing. What they shared is that they feel like they do have a very heavy workflow and caseload and need to support the teachers or support the principals in the buildings. This is definitely going to be one of the other big things, as Brad has noted, that has been added to their plate in helping us successfully implement our field tests with Amplify. So BPSU would be like one of those other things you're adding on to, not necessarily something we could probably incorporate. It's also something that takes place outside of the school day. If I'm not mistaken, we meet Wednesdays, all of our people meet on Wednesdays at 4:00 PM. So, yeah, it's just a little bit of different programming, I guess, the best way to put it.
Understandable, but.
There's also a heavy component to teacher leadership in the curriculum. I know some of the books that they've read in the past couple of years have focused on mindset, leadership, teacher leadership, and teacher voice.
And BPSU? In BPSU?
Yes.
So Michelle Thompson, did we work with her before?
Yeah.
And I, so I read the Schedule A, but I'm gonna be honest, I don't know exactly what that means. Is she gonna be a speaker at professional development days? Or is she meeting with instructional coaches weekly on?
So what Michelle does is facilitate professional learning. So it can be large groups. So she, at the Batavia Library in Homestead, we did three sessions for our staff for the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan. And she planned and facilitated those three sessions. And then she'll do, she did some at the high school during our second institute day. And then she'll work with me and the instructional coaches on monthly PD for the buildings to kind of follow up from that and keep that learning going. And then we have also the ELA Salt Team. She's a resource for that team as well. So that's primarily what she's doing.
That's all the questions I have.
Others?
Right, I guess I'm thinking, just based on all of Raquel's questions there, it made me think about, is, this is a value question to me, is, are we getting the value for our limited, our limited dollars that we have, that we have to be very careful about how we spend? So are we being redundant with some of these efforts? Are we being efficient with some of these efforts? And I guess, at least that's what I got out of your questions there, trying to get to that point. And is there some way we can measure this and build that business case and that value story? So that we know that this money that we're spending is, is being used wisely.
Are you talking, Rob, are you talking about the instructional coaching program or BPSU?
Their services. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just be very general here.
All three of them.
We're hiring, yeah.
So you're talking about everything?
These three individuals. What value are they providing? And how do we measure that value? How do we say we're paying seventy-five thousand dollars? How do we know that, what are the things that were done? And maybe it's just the documentation, it looks like, you know, they've done all this stuff. But do we have the metrics, the feedback documented? So we can say, yeah, we, this consultant was hired for this purpose and this is the outcome of that.
Yeah, I don't know.
As we, as we go for a renewal of these, these kind of services, kind of building that business case, if you will, and why we need to renew.
Yes, and I would say collectively, it's over a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So it's, it's a substantial amount of money. I, I have similar concerns. And I noticed that Angie Sutherland's address is listed as Geneva, Tennessee.
Sure.
On the IARSs website, and all the others on that website are Illinois. Some of them are even in Geneva, so I was curious why we're using someone that's out of state. And does she ever travel to our district to do any of the work?
Yeah, she's a lifelong Batavian, born and raised, went to school here, taught here for twenty-seven years. Due to a family job transfer, she lives in Tennessee.
We do have, Kirsten, it's a good question. I, we do have some of our other consultants who do travel from other states here. Most recently, two of our Amplify consultants with the new curriculum for field testing don't actually live in Illinois either. And they, they will come on site to work with our teachers administration, so.
I have questions if, if anybody minds. I will actually start with a comment. I probably have talked to like twenty teachers in and out of the district in the last couple of days. And the anecdotal feedback I get regarding consultants generally, and in some cases, these consultants specifically from teachers is not glowing. I would call it negative, very negative feedback on the usefulness to teachers of these consultants. Most of my questions have been answered. I had asked, when is the last time any of these consultants were in a classroom? And I was told we don't have that information. I went on LinkedIn and a couple of other places. It looks to me, and this is just general research, one of them has never been in a classroom. And the other two have not been in a classroom since two thousand twelve. Would you say that's accurate, probably?
I don't know.
Okay.
I know that, I can speak to Angie Sutherland. I don't know when she left here, but she was a instructional coach and a tech coach here in Batavia. I don't know if that's by the definition of in the classroom, if someone's defining that. I don't know when she left here, maybe twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, I'm guessing. So I can always speak to Angie.
Before, before COVID? So none of them have classroom experience post-COVID?
No, I'm not, I will always speak to Angie, as far as I know, no. Having said that, and I, and I'm only gonna say this because I don't think this has been stated. And I'm only speaking about Angie because she's the person I interact the most with, most with because of BPSU. But we have a massive capacity issue. We're basically teaching arguably a two-year internal master's course with BPSU, two of them simultaneously. And being honest, we all have full-time jobs to teach the course and we do need help. And I would say that, you know, I don't know, Drew Ray is a very proud graduate of BPSU. And I don't know if we were having Angie's services at the time, but we brought in Angie to try to enhance some of the work we were doing because we were struggling in our own roles to be able to give our teachers the right, like, support and direction for that work. And so I completely hear where you're coming from, but I just wanted to make the statement that, from the BPSU lens, part of it where we needed assistance is for a capacity issue to provide like a solid, robust program for our BPS students. Because we don't, we, if, there's been lots of people who've gone through it and like, it's, it's hard work. And I think there's a lot of benefits from that hard work and collaboration. And the capacity that Angie has provided for us, and I can just speak personally for me, in my role as one of the chief instructors, has been really, really valuable. Because it's, it's one less portion of our programming, which is fairly comprehensive, that I don't have to be there and be present for and take care of all the little details. So I'm sorry if I spoke too long there, but I just wanted to be clear about the capacity situation.
Thank you.
Can I add, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If BPSU is not, it's unique to our district, correct?
Yes.
So if this is not how other districts do it, why are we doing that, doing it this way?
That was gonna be my question, could you explain what BPSU is?
BPSU is a great program. It actually came out of a bargain, two bargains ago, I want to say, three bargains ago, two bargains ago, thank you. As a way to really attack things from a lot of levels, it can increase compensation for our teaching staff. We also know that the learning that they're getting is aligned to our work and our strategic plan as opposed to a random program where, I don't know who's instructing that, we don't know what they're teaching them, et cetera, et cetera. So massive alignment. It also doesn't put our teaching staff into debt. They're able to essentially get an internal university programming and get compensation for it without spending thirty or forty thousand dollars. Lastly, and something that we don't really struggle with a ton, but you get a BPSU degree here, that doesn't go with you anywhere else. And so arguably, it could help with retention. I will say that we've had, I don't know, six to ten local school districts in this state, and probably three or four nationally that have reached out to us. And we've met with and talked with so that they can learn about our program to take to their systems. And I can tell you, there's multiple Illinois districts that have made efforts at replicating what we do. So I'm very invested in this, obviously you can tell. But I would, I would, I would argue that it's, it's a pretty powerful thing that we do. And it's one of the best things, in my opinion, that has come out of bargaining in our contractual process where nobody had this idea. We had, we had like a shared interest in providing increased compensation, better, more focused learning. And this was the outcome, and I think it's been a beautiful thing. So if you want more on BPSU, we'd be more than happy to come and give a presentation to the board too.
I did share with the board the BPSU current prospectus that's being used for our current two cohorts. So that's been updated over the years with each cohort when they apply for the program. I think I made note, we typically have a little over seventy applicants, and our cohorts fill to about twenty per cohort.
So just kind of going off of that and one of the comments that I made. So, you know, of all of our teachers in BPSU, and they're all veteran, I guess the other question would be, of those veteran teachers, how many already have master's degree? And how, how many already have the master's plus? And I know we're trying to be equitable, and I know with BEA contracts, certain things, it's a lottery. However, are we really being equitable to those non-tenured teachers? Who do want to stay in the district, who don't, just got out of college, don't have the means to go to a master's program? So if we're, if we're hosting our own internal master program, why would we not want to give, and again, I know it's in the BEA contract, so I'm not, this is like a rhetorical question, but why would we not give, you know, reach out to after these first, second year teachers saying, hey, we have this great program and allot them so many slots? You know, veteran teachers, yeah, they get a bump up in pay. So if I'm three years from retirement, why would I not want to go in for this to bump up my pay? I just think that.
I could try to answer a couple of those questions if you'd like.
I mean, it's up to you if you want to.
Pressure, yeah. It was a subject, we talk about it extensively at the bargaining table because these are factors that affect, obviously, the BEA's members. And I don't speak for the BEA, but I can talk about, to some, some degree, about what we wrestled with when we made some of these decisions. And the one, the primary one when it comes to non-tenured teachers, and one of the real reasons why we felt it wasn't in our best interest to offer this to non-tenured teachers was because we wanted them, at an early stage in their career, to focus on their classroom. And we didn't feel as though it was, this could be a distraction for them when they're new to the district and they're learning a lot of new things. And it's, it's just a challenge. So that was a key factor in, in that decision. And then lastly, you know, with the way our retirement incentive works, it is offered where if, to be eligible, you have to retire at the first year that you're eligible for what's called a non-discounted annuity. And so the way that for tier one pensions in Illinois and TRS is the way that they factor your, your, your annuity, how much you earn, is the last four years. And if you earn more than six percent in those last four years, and then the, the school district who paid you, the last district of record pays essentially a penalty. It's not technically a penalty, but it's the cost of them paying that increased pension. And it's very expensive, it's extremely expensive. So if you earn more than six percent in those last few years, it's not, and you wouldn't want to incentivize teachers to retire because in addition to that teacher retiring, you're gonna pay a penalty of sometimes in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. So when you earn this degree program and you have a pretty substantial raise as you're retiring, it doesn't make financial sense for the school district to, to offer a retirement incentive and give large raises if somebody's retiring.
Can I add one piece that I think is important that some people may or may not know too? Is that, and this is good news, in the state of Illinois, they continue to shift what tenure looks like. Most recently, it was four years and it's gone to three years. There's also something called accelerated tenure. Accelerated tenure is if someone in their first two years gets an excellent rating in their evaluation for performance, they become tenured day one of year three. And so you all saw in the personnel report, it's a pretty extensive list of teachers that are tenured. So many of those people in there, I don't know how many, I could determine that and let, share it with you. But many of that thirty-seven are people who are literally starting their third year in Batavia, and they're now tenured. And that means this March, when we have our applications for compensation for education to increase their compensation, they would be eligible. So tenure doesn't take as long as it used to. And a lot, we're seeing a lot more of our staff who are attaining tenure after that second year. So that, that also, you know, while they are tenured, they're not somebody who's been here a long time. And I think that's a positive for them to get access to a program like BPSU.
And if I could follow on, going back, I didn't do a very good job articulating it, but looking at the non-tenured staff, one of the other factors that we considered was that this being an internal university and the, essentially the equivalent of a master's degree program, if those teachers invested their time and we invested our time and money into them, they would come out with a program that would work well for them in Batavia schools. But if they decided that Batavia schools wasn't a place for them, that credit would not be portable. So that's a factor, I mean, there's a whole host of others. But we wrestled with this stuff at the bargaining table with the BEA, all these factors.
And the we on that is you and the BEA and that discussion was a collaborative session.
And I say wrestle in, in a, in a good sense, like, we had very good productive conversations. And this whole idea of what BPSU is and became is, I think, is a product of, of our collaboration. We never went into the bargaining, went to the bargaining table with this idea in mind, nor do I think they did. But the way that we do negotiations in this district is something that I'm proud of. And it's, I'm always amazed at what comes out from it because we really wrestle with the issues and figure out the various perspectives. And then we problem solve them, we brainstorm ideas, and we come out sometimes with things that are absolutely fantastic. And that, in this particular case, BPSU is one of the crown jewels of Batavia schools.
Have you ever done any anonymous reviews from the teachers that have been through the program to get honest feedback about how they feel about it?
We haven't done anonymous, we've done where they, they actually answer it and tell us the feedback. And we get dynamite feedback on BPSU.
So I just want to be clear, we also need to stay on our topic of related to the specific question at hand, not BPSU in general. I think there is a great need to maybe have a deeper conversation about this.
I'll talk about it forever.
I'm aware, and I'm not, it just, I want to make sure that we're focusing on the question at hand for these three, these three consultants, so. And additionally, as far as like reviews and people's names and everything else, we would need to be cognizant about kind of talking about people's names or at least being reasonably favorable, positive or negative reviews about them. We might need to go into closed session if we're gonna get into that depth of conversation about it, so. Just as a heads up, so. Any other questions?
Are, do we know how the BEA feels about the consultants being proposed? Is that, where do they stand generally on consulting or these specific consultants? Because again, I, I heard overwhelmingly from teachers this week that the best education they receive, the best personal development they receive is from other working teachers, like themselves. And that there's just no comparison to bringing a consultant in. And for a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, I just wonder if we have staffing shortages we could cover or just, I don't know. It's just, it's a lot of money, and I, I did not gather good feedback or reactions to this set of consultants. And honestly, just consulting in general, from working teachers.
We heard a little bit about Angie and Denet and Michelle, both are building principals that have a track record of success in really tough districts. They have district level experience as well. So that, to me, is really valuable in terms of them helping us lead these initiatives. We have a curriculum team of three people. So we do have capacity issues in a lot of this big work. And they bring a level of expertise that is needed to keep those things going.
Okay. I've also heard that the Teacher of the Year program is encouraging school districts to choose from among Teacher of the Year recipients and select them as consultants for the district, which I think adds a really interesting layer of, I think, ownership. If a teacher from our district is providing consulting in PD, have we considered that route? I think we have several Teachers of the Year, like. I think we have several Teachers of the Year, like currently teaching in Batavia, is that right?
Not that I'm aware.
Okay, I think, okay, I thought I found four of them. So that's not something we're interested in exploring?
I have not had a conversation with the union specifically about that. I would also love to, I'll, I'll look deeper into, I don't, Katie, if you want to send me a link to what specific program with ISB you're speaking to. See, then I'll look more into it, for sure.
If, if these people are not accepted tonight as an action item, does it make the job difficult to do the services that you need to do in this coming year?
Absolutely.
Is the board interested in obtaining some feedback about the qualities? Or some of the, because what I'm hearing from a couple of you is about like a kind of feedback process about them. Is the board interested in this staff and admin kind of gathering that information and that data? And giving them an opportunity to kind of provide a value-based discussion about that?
Is your question about consultants or these specific three people?
Specifically, not these three, I, I think, I don't, I, I think in general consultants.
So just to keep in mind then, what that opens up is to the general pool of consultants our district does use. You know, we have trained experts that we consult with on a regular basis about our HVAC systems. We use consultants, this is getting me right now, I apologize. But even you as a board have used consultants for your own work as a board leadership team. So, I just would like to, this is kind of, I'm going to use our board protocols. For me, I feel like I'm being caught by a little bit by surprise about some action and direction that the board's coming up with tonight. There was questions that were submitted yesterday, and I did my best to make sure we could get answers to you for those questions on the discussion that, on item five point seven. I feel like the discussion is expanding into a much larger scope at the moment, which is fair. You're the Board of Education, I'm not saying that it's not fair. But in terms of us as the team and working with staff, carrying out the board's mission of having prepared for this year's work, this would be a pretty significant pivot to everything we've outlined for the year. I mean, if I were to show you, our learning calendar is, is from end of year, working all the way backwards, our team has mapped it all out already. So, what I would like to at least ask for consideration from the board is that if there's going to be a larger conversation about our use of consultants, love it, could we spend a little bit of time talking about what that looks like? But in the meantime, consider what we're looking at under five point seven, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be a yes on this, but I, I just, like I said, I, going forward, when we come to these kind of issues, if we can build that business case and value story, let's make that decision.
Whenever we have consultants, I think, I always ask, was there feedback from whoever they worked with? I know I've asked that question multiple times.
Yeah, I guess the question is, is it a more formal process as opposed to this is what I'm hearing, this is what people are telling me? Because as Katie has talked to people and said that she's hearing one thing, and it seems like other people are hearing other things. So I don't know how to manage that, I didn't talk to any of the people Katie talked to, so.
And then just for a matter of knowledge, we do use other consultants through like the ROE or other, like University of Illinois, for smaller strands of our consultative work and professional development in the district. I think I made note of one that I sat through last week, which was the inquiry journey, right? That, that was the one I noted, right? For social studies, and Dr. Wilson did a great job of building in his lens of how you approach inquiry and social studies curriculum, utilizing that lens of inclusion and equity. And so, the thing is, those do get feedback directly, just to make sure you're all aware, that, that those do get feedback from our, our staff that participate in those sessions. We're required to do that due to ISB's requirements so that we can issue professional development credit. So, it's not like we don't ever get feedback. I think, and what I'm hearing though, is that you would like to see that on some of the areas that we may not typically gather formal feedback from our, from staff, right?
I haven't really spoken to any, I've been thinking through all the questions, I've been taking this online, I'm definitely not in any sort of expert in this area. So when you guys do bring us stuff, I think what's, this is sitting weird for me, because we, we do get things under consent agenda where things are shown to us, but you know, a lot of times, like if we're asked to approve a contract, there's been a lot of work to compare, hey, we've looked at this person, this person, and this person. I think this is the third time that I, or maybe second or third time, that I think I'm approving the same people or being asked to approve the same people. But I haven't heard about, I guess there's some questions, like I don't knows, and some we're not sure, the, the data's not being collected. So I just kind of feel like in general, we do look to our experts, whether it's Josh, whether it's Mark, whether it's you all, to kind of spread out, hey, we've, we've looked at this, we've looked at the data behind it, we've looked at the value behind it. We're for sure this is what's, what's right, like best for us. We also looked at these services, like I don't know Angie, and I'm not trying to go on, on anything specific, but lives in Tennessee, is there someone here? Are there staff members here? I don't want to get too far into that, but I guess for me, there's a lot of questions. And usually, we're kind of given a lot more solid answers and just kind of like, there's been that flow of work to kind of back up, where we're not putting our hands in it necessarily, because you all have, have shown like, yes, we sat down, we considered this person, we looked at him compared to this person, and I haven't heard that. And so that part kind of sits weird with me, and I think when you're speaking about how we have different people we bring in, I think a lot of time we do, you all do that work of, let me see what the service is, let me see what the service is from company A, B, and C. All right, board, we, we looked at company A, B, and C, we compared, I mean, we did that with DMG, we didn't just go with DMG. You had a committee that went up and, and actually looked at a couple places and went back and forth on the pros and cons. So, you know, I guess without any data that backs up the work of these specific people to over and over, it's kind of, I would like to, yeah, like with Rob, what Rob said, I would like to see the metrics behind it. But I think there's a little bit of a difference from what is being asked tonight versus what we get some other times.
Yeah, and I think, so that comes back to then, like, why there's a, a state statute and, and in board policy, where we're required to bring to the board an approval whenever we enter any contractual services between the district and a third-party group, right? The reason being is that that, that sum of money, in our board policy, it's twenty-five thousand dollars or higher. And we have to come to you for those approvals, because at that monetary level, you know, that's, from a fiduciary standpoint, that's one of your primary charges is the board, to ensure that the larger sums of money that are being expended are, you know, meeting what you need as a Board of Education, right, or what you believe that should be approved. Anything below that, you know, part of that standard is partially due to the fact that there's also recognition that we as administrators have to approve and make decisions on a daily basis, all kinds of decisions that result in some financial expenditures. And, so Danielle, if we, if we were to bring every, for example, over the last several institute days that we had to open the year, you know, those are all part of the big plan that fall into the strategic plan, the scope and sequence of everything that everyone's been working on. But to provide these in like one to two month settings for approval as we're using the summer to plan these things would really hamper our ability to prepare for institute days. Not saying it'd be impossible, but it would change the scope, and that's part of the reason why they talk about anything below twenty-five thousand, that has the administrative authority to move forward with that work. Because some of these consultants that are working with us, we're getting surveys and feedback, but it's also in, in alignment with what we're trying to do as a district in following some of the plans, such as the Illinois Literacy Plan, or the inquiry work and the changing standards in social studies, or the changing standards in, in science, you know, and so we have to kind of make sure we're staying up to speed with that.
So, one, one question I have is historically, and I'm a person who effectively works as a consultant to a lot of municipalities and firms. And I'm, I'm, I'm going to provide my perspective on your statement, Danielle, about it is, DMG came to us as a, here's a number of options, because it's the first time we were engaging with any of them. It was the first time we were engaging in that process, right? So, at that point then, it kind of starts the clock. When, typically, when you're kind of bringing forward or approving people as you kind of go along, if they've got a history of an experience with the district, then they can continue on that, but we still have to approve them. So, that's a broader question about is there a time clock that says, okay, every five? And this is why he was, I think he was saying, we need to be able to maybe have a broader conversation, that is there a time clock that says, okay, every five years, a consultant should be evaluated within five years? Or is it an every-year basis? Is it all our consultants or a couple of consultants? Is it, you know, like, that's the challenge of trying to figure out how to manage this level, because as I understand it, outside of what Katie, you had said with what you found, they seem to be meeting the needs of it, they're, you're putting forward the same people that have worked with us for a while now, in most cases. And you don't have any reason to expect that they would not continue what you believe is successful execution of their contract and their work.
Yep, they're very good.
I guess my question would be, we have a consultant, and let's say they charge us ten thousand dollars a year. They can do whatever they want, so it really doesn't matter how I feel about that consultant, because they're already doing that. So it's like, well, if I'm going to spend over twenty-five thousand, maybe we just need to have a little, I don't know how many consultants that is, you guys would know better. So do I want to know if you consult a window guy that's going to charge you five thousand dollars? Probably not, because that's your scope. But again, I don't know how many consultants we have that are over twenty-five thousand dollars, you guys would know more. And I think that would be an exhaustive list, so if you guys say, it's a hundred and fifty consultants, then I'd be like, okay, maybe we don't need a, something on all a hundred and fifty. You know, but I don't know. That's just my view. But yeah, if it's, it's under twenty-five thousand, they're just going to do it, so it's like.
I think I'll echo Mr. Arulandu. I think it would be, like, I don't think of like, when we have technology and we're spending money, it's like, well, how is this helping students? How is it helping teachers? So, I am going to trust your expertise to pick the right people. Just having a little more background on why we're deciding to use a consultant instead of an inside resource. And I'm not saying we need like pages and pages of documentation, but maybe a little more context. Because in a lot of these instances, we're approving expenditures, I'm thinking of other instances. Sometimes there will be a question, like, why are we doing this? And there's a little bit, you know, a little bit more to that, rather than, we've just done this the past three years or whatever, you know? I'm not saying that's bad on any of these people, I'm just saying, it just gives you a little more context of why we need a consultant and what they're doing.
I think that's where, I don't know if this is what you were trying to say, but I don't want to just do things because that's what we've been doing, kind of thing, right? I want to understand when it comes to our level, because that is our responsibility. When it's at this point, right, we need to understand, and I, I looked at it, I didn't, I was like, I don't understand. I thought it was just like a me thing, but there's a lot of good questions that back up some of the questions I had and some of the misunderstandings I have. I'm still a bit lost. However, like, I, I understand some of the points to consultants and I don't think that any of us would expect to reuse any team unless we can say, yeah, we were really satisfied with this. The people who are using it and being, you know, utilizing it and supposed to get what their, the services from it, I want to know what they feel. And that's how I'm going to understand, like, yeah, this is a really effective consultant, like, with your backing on it, with the people who are using it, their backing on it. So, yeah, again, just, it's a lot to take in. And so I know that you said that there's a lot riding on this, and I'm not saying any board direction, it's just a curiosity. If for any reason this did not go through tonight, I'm not saying that's what's going to happen, but just out of curiosity from one of the conversation points, is this something that comes back next month with more information? Or is there a possibility, like, to ease some of the doubts and, and maybe have more understanding behind it? Or is that not, I don't know with this type of thing?
I don't know the timing on this, I don't know whether or not this is, if it doesn't get approved today, that there's some challenges on executing the work that they need to be doing and would cause problems with BPSU and other things.
It would?
I don't have any idea. It sounds as if it'd be difficult to run it.
This work has already started, Michelle's done work for us.
So Michelle was involved in training over a hundred teachers who, who elected to take the option to be trained in the summer on the Illinois Literacy Plan. So she's already kind of, in good faith, started that work with our district.
That wasn't from last year's fees that she did, that's from this one?
Well, the training took place over our institute days, so it was in this calendar year. And that, and, and by the way, that's a pretty common practice, as you all have pointed out, we have been using her. So, you know, as a vendor who's been previously approved by the board, you know, for us, in terms of getting these plannings, this planning ready, because we have a mechanism with the BEA that allows a swap from institute day during the school year to front-load a summer training day, if the teachers would like to use that for the training. And so, you know, as you're aware, we have just a little under fifty teachers who are pilot, are field testing our new curriculum. And, but in the meantime, one of the designs of getting us ready for a full-blown ELA switch-over is to make sure all the other teachers who did not participate in the work last year are getting brought up to speed on context of the Illinois Literacy Plan. The why, the what, the how, and, and it's helping, trying to help them understand, this is why the ELA SALT team, CAC, and even through our strategic plan process two and a half years ago, where the biggest outcry was, we really want to relook and revisit our ELA curriculum, right, particularly K through five. And so that's been part, that's why we had to get this work moving, so.
To, sorry, to clarify, so some of what is up for approval tonight has already been done? Is that what you're saying?
With Michelle Thompson.
Yes, okay, okay.
So I want to clarify my comments that, like, on a lot of these things, there's a tremendous amount of trust that we're giving to Tom Kim and his team. And so when I say I want feedback, like, just to help me understand better, but ultimately, you know, I'm entrusting him to be the expert, I, it would take years to probably gain your level of expertise. So I just think it helps us, it's like a HVAC system, if Mark Anderson comes up here, none of us are going to be able to install an HVAC system and understand the components, but we can kind of understand the general, and then why we're using it, and why we're spending it, and why that's a good use of taxpayer dollar and, and district resources in this level. And so that's where I'm coming from when I'm looking at this. I'm not, I'll be honest, I'm really interested in litigating like any one of these people individually as far as their efficacy, because I trust them to make a good judgment.
Litigating them?
I'm just saying, I'm not looking, not litigating, but I, I don't, if they say these are the three people, then like, if we're hiring consultants and this is our budget, and these people fit in those slots, do this work, and they think they're the best people for it, then I am going to go with them, as long as they can, if they can make the case of why we're using consultants and what they're doing. And to Rob's point, it is providing a service that's advancing the education of our teachers, that's benefiting our students, and it's a good use of tax dollars.
Do, I guess, yes. And I think my other question, and, and I agree with that, that point, I think the question that rides along with that is, how are the people who are receiving those services feeling about it, right? Because we know that Brad, Steve, Tom, yes, I trust them with that, their expertise on that part. I also want to understand the expertise of the people in the rooms and that are getting those services. You know what I mean? Like, how is it applying for them? How is it bettering their abilities to do what, you know, what we hire them to do, to do their jobs? That is, I think, some of the information or the metrics that are missing from me when hearing the questions in the conversation.
Yeah, I'm happy to design a process with the board, that's not been something that we've done in the past, so I don't know what you're looking for exactly, so I can definitely work with the board. I think it's also important to involve PLAT, our Professional Learning Advisory Council, in that process, so this wouldn't be something that I can get the board even next month, because it would be a lot of work to get a process, and then we would have to execute that process over a month.
So why would, since it's going to take some time, what I'd like to do is put this as a board discussion element at our next meeting, so that we can figure out what extent, because I'm hearing everything from I want. I believe I'm hearing everything from I want. I believe I'm hearing everything from I want, kind of in-depth surveys, to I would like, which is where I, my head is sitting of, when someone comes forward and says, this is a consultant, we have, um, we feel that they're very important and that this is necessary for the work. We don't have this combination of people, of one person that can do all of this work. So, that's why there's three separate people on this particular, I'm making it up. I have no idea about that being the case here.
I'm actually taking this as that. This is great information. I know. I wish we would've had that.
I'm just explaining that this is like, that's, I'm, I'm kind of use-casing it a bit.
Wish we would've had that.
And so, therefore, we've gotten our input from our, our own administration and the teachers that participated, or the staff really, because some of them could be best buff for what, you know, the staff that participated in that process. So, that's as we're renewing contracts. That's, that's the other end that I'm hearing from it. So, what I'd like to do is say, okay, we've kind of got enough information about these particular ones here potentially, and could call for a vote. And then for a board discussion at our next meeting, we could try to map out so that, I don't want him designing a process with us. I want him to make a recommendation that he feels meets the goals that we're asking for. So, I would like us to be able at our next meeting to establish the goals surrounding this. Rob?
I just, I agree with you a hundred percent. I think, but it, to Brad's point, I don't know if we need like a formal, like, one-size-fits-all, I guess is what I'm trying to say. I don't think that's gonna be the case.
Maybe not.
It's gonna be really dependent on each particular item, where we may want a little bit more for one item versus, you know, a couple pieces of information may be okay for another. So, it's, it's really gonna be dependent in my, on what it is.
Let us talk about it at the next one. We'll try to give you some clear direction at that one for any goals and/or a way to sort through the one-offs that every one of them could end up being. That's a good point, Rob. So. All right. I would like to call for a vote.
Motion.
A motion, I would like to hear a, let me get back to my part. And we'll entertain a motion to approve item five point seven, CNI, support contracts.
So moved.
So moved by Aaron.
Second.
Second by Rob. Does any please lead us in a roll call vote?
Arlandu?
Yes.
Geroz?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
No.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Sliger?
No.
Swaseki?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, Tom.
Foyer reports. We've presented the foyer reports to you. Are there any questions? It was a little bit of a lighter, um, period, and there was only three foias this, this time.
All right, treasure reports, Tony.
The usual, in terms of the treasurers' report this month, nothing out of the ordinary.
Any questions? All right. Committee updates, Tom.
So, as Brad pointed out, our committees have not formally met yet. Uh, you just got started with the school year, so as we roll along, we'll have more committee reports. But I will, uh, slide us into six point four, if you don't mind doing that for you.
Go right ahead.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, under official, uh, policy first reading for the board's policy committee, we have that ready for you tonight, and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Raquel and Aaron as the co-chairs for the board committee.
I'll turn it over to Raquel. She's got a.
All right. Uh, so then we got a packet, and I know in our packet that was sent out, um, there was just a lot of procedures that, that were included, so I'm not really gonna go over those procedures because we don't vote on them. It's just, um, so forth. So, the very first, well, we're gonna do two point one one oh at the end, so we're gonna start with six point one five zero, the home and hospital. And that was basically just updated to, um, cross-reference, uh, home instruction for students due to pregnancy-related conditions, fulfillment of parental obligation, health, file, um, health and safety concerns arising from domestic and sexual assault. And just so everyone is aware, this also includes not just the mother, but it is the father as well. Any questions on that one? For, uh, six point two three five, that is the access to electronic, um, network, uh, networks. That was just, um, policy and footnotes updates, um, that address the use of artificial intelligence, um, enabled in schools. So, there's a new option for the use of intelligence enabled schools, um, and it's about this policy. I did ask, um, at our policy meeting, what was Wobonzi Community College policy, because we do have a dual credit with them. So, uh, and they were a little bit behind. They really don't have really, I think, a policy on AI or, or, um, so forth.
I think it's an emerging field for everybody right now, and, and not, not just emerging, but it's, the, the technology is changing so quickly right now, so. But, um, yeah, that was a good question.
Uh, so seven point zero four zero, uh, non-public school students, including prokial homeschooled, uh, homeschooled students, uh, the policy and footnotes were updated um, in response to a five-year review. Um, and on page three, we had basically a homegrown section, which was the extracurriculars activities, including interscholastic competition. And we felt that we were just gonna remove that. So, that's what we basically did. If there's any questions on that one.
Wait, what, what's removed from that?
Uh, we have a home, it's a homegrown.
Yeah.
Um, and it's about, uh, extracurricular activities, including interscholastic competition.
So, are, I mean, that still happens, or are we just removing our language behind it?
Yeah, cause that's homegrown.
Got it, okay.
So, it wasn't, it's not like a, um.
Was it a recommendation from press or anything?
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
So, we're just removing that. Seven point zero seven oh, um, exhibit for codes and attendance. Uh, well, that's much as an exhibit. So, let me go down. I'm going off of our last one, so. Seven point one nine is student behavior. That was, uh, updated to clarify regarding, um, steck- texting. So, um, there was a lot.
Expanded the definitions.
Yes, yes. Um, so I don't really, um, I don't know if there's any questions on that one. Uh, seven point, um, seven point two was the suspension, um, procedures. And, um, we do, we did have part of this. So, we, the procedures, it was just the footnotes and policy were updated in response to, um, providing suspension review and hearing expulsion. Um, it was updated for domestic and sexual violence situations. We did have, it's not in here, but we did have a procedure, the, um, suspension appeal procedure, which is homegrown.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, thanks. Um, we discovered that we have no, um, and Brad, please forgive me and correct me if I'm getting my facts incorrect here, but we have not had a suspension appeal window, like a timeframe for, uh, students or families who want to appeal. So, um, we found that to be somewhat problematic because technically, uh, let's say Tom Kim was suspended and my mom wanted to appeal it a year later, she could. Now, what would that do? You know, I mean, like, what does that look like and what reason? You know, that, that's a different conversation, but that, that we just found that logistically and operationally to be a very odd thing. So, I did ask, um, the King County superintendents what they would have, and, yeah, we were the only ones without a timeline. So, um, so we have a recommendation, um, that we're gonna put into our procedures to put a timeframe on that. And it's not to rush the clock. It's a favorable window. Brad?
Ten days?
Three days for the initial within the building and then about ten days total to request the.
And that aligns.
Business days.
Business.
Business days, okay.
Business, that's right. That's right. Business days, not calendar days.
And that somewhat aligns to what you're seeing at other districts?
Yes, yes. Um, and then, um.
And the other part that we didn't have procedures on that, uh, other King County districts shared was that, um, in many districts, the suspension appeal goes to the superintendent for decision. There's a hearing, and then that hearing officer's report goes to the superintendent for decision. In our case, it goes to the board. So, that would be a question for the board to decide whether they want the superintendent to do suspension appeals or, um, that would come to the full board. Expulsion, you don't have an option. You get all those. But suspension, there is an option for you to designate Tom as the superintendent, as the person that will get that appeal and make the decision.
Do we have, will we need to be able to do an action on that or a consensus on that first, or is that something that's already in place?
That would be a.
It would be a change. I- so if you, if the board, so with first policy discussion, you can kind of share now what that feedback is, and if there's conflicting.
Feedback, would you try and get consensus as to what the board would like in second reading?
If you would like to, uh, one, keep it as is, suspension, uh, appeals would just come to the board. Or two, uh, with consensus, say, we would like to see a second policy reading, changing that and making the superintendent the, uh, final appeal to that process. It's totally up to what the board would like to do.
Our other districts generally at superintendent?
Yes, cause they're lower stakes. Most of the time, a parent wants their kid returned to school. But that never happens when you go through the formal appeal because we do have a hearing and we go through that process. So, the kid's usually back in school. So, um, a lot of districts turn that over to the superintendent as the final appeal.
Can that also mean that the, that the process can happen faster?
Yes.
As opposed to waiting a full month?
Waiting till a board meeting or?
For a board meeting.
Yeah, just for a holding.
Facts out. Cause even if we convene a special board meeting, right?
Yeah.
By the time that's done, the three-day out of school, five-day out of school might already been served.
Right.
To try and get a special board meeting in.
They don't happen that often.
I'm not, I can't remember how many times that in the.
Suspension, I think, probably one that's gone all the way to the board.
Six years? I can't remember much of that.
Fifteen years, probably one for me. So, it doesn't happen that often.
Like a wood, cause I don't want it to start coming out of the woodwork, but. Does anyone have any, is anyone specifically opposed to it being Tom? No?
I really can if you want.
Tom opposed to it being Tom.
Yes, Tom. That is a very good question.
These kids get me.
Okay.
Okay, so then moving on to seven point two one oh expulsion, um, policy and footnotes were just updated basically due to the suspension procedures. Just, they kind of aligned. Um, that's all that was for. Seven two, uh, two five oh, um, was a support student services, um, and that's basically this change requiring the twelve years of age and older to be annually notified of the availability of counseling. Designation, at least one staff member in each building as a resource to those students. Seven point two five five, um, this is a brand-new policy where students who are parents, expectant parents are victims of domestic and sexual violence. So, it's brand-new. Um, it just kind of outlines.
Is it not in our report?
I'm not seeing it on our list.
It ended at seven two five oh.
Oh, did it?
Yeah.
So, can we still do a first reading on that, or do we need to?
We just wait till next.
Well, we presented it at policy committee. So, I think we do have a provision that says, if it's recommended by press and it's to implement the law, that we can skip first reading.
So, why don't we just at least update us while we're in the process of confirming all of that?
Yeah.
So that we're all at least up to speed on it.
And to be clear, it is a recommendation from press and it's implementing a law.
Yes. Correct. The policy was just in response to, um, this law requiring the districts to ensure that they have policies, procedures, and resources in place to ensure that the, uh, students are provided the resources necessary to enable them to meet state regulations. Really wasn't anything that, that struck us out. It was just all, cause it's brand-new. Yeah, branded law. That's just all that was just reflected law.
Incidentally, it is posted on the website as being a proposed revision. It just doesn't happen to be in the board book.
Thank you, Tony.
And then in the packet that you guys got about a month this ago, um, there was some, um, procedures that go with this. So, I mean, I'm not gonna go over those because it's, that's just for awareness. And I think that was it.
That was, that was the last one.
Yeah, that was the last one. And then there was other some procedures. Um, there were just some of them. Again, we don't vote on those. It's made for awareness. Good job. No questions. I'm good.
Hearing none, go for it.
All right, so, we decided, uh, we've received feedback from three people that wanted to, to discuss changing the policy. So, um, what we're gonna do is have a, a public discussion about it. And, and before we have that discussion, I would like to ask the board for permission. Per request of Tom, we got feedback from our attorney, Mr. Fester, and from our IASB representative Laura Martinez and asked for their feedback on our policy and their recommendations. When, in terms of Mr. Fester, normally this is confidential, uh, communication between the board and our attorney. But for this case, for the sake of conversation and our, to make a good decision, uh, would the board like to vote thumbs up to agree to waive that in this case? And I will read a synopsis that, uh, Raquel and I both reviewed from Mr. Fester that articulates what his position was as far as our recommendation. Is that all thumbs up from everybody? Okay, so first I'm gonna read, uh, um, a synopsis from our board attorney, and then the second statement will be from Laura Martinez from IASB. So, from board attorney, Mr. Fester, if there is agreement to change the policy, it is not a legal matter. However, his recommendation to protect, to protect the board is to make the change effective the next scheduled election, which is April twenty twenty-seven. This is due to the argument that all three officers were publicly acted on by the board by a policy that stated a two-year term. Does everyone hear that? Do you want me to read that again? I know I stumbled a little bit there. And then the second statement is from Laura Martinez from the Illinois Association of School Boards. Since the IASB sample policy two one one zero says the term of the president is two years, I think that that would be IASB's recommendation. I also recommend a two-year term versus a one-year term. There needs to be stability in board leadership, and holding an election for board president every year could be problematic if a different board member was elected each year. To me, it makes sense to follow the board member election cycle and hold the board officer election every two years when new members join the board. End of statement. So, then I guess if you would open it up for discussion?
We're all like.
I, I will start if you want.
I, I don't mind. I, I think that, that I hear the twenty twenty-seven term, um, part of it. That was a curiosity that I had. If we are, you know, since, I don't know what, it's not that they took oath, but that we elected them in. Um, for the two-year term, I had curiosities around that. With Laura's statement, I'll just kind of give my own feedback and my own, uh, on it, like, from my own experience. It's really hard coming in, waiting on the terms and coming in, being, uh, sworn in, and then immediately going to choosing who's going to be, you know, president, vice president, secretary when you are just joining. You, you haven't had any, a lot of times no interaction with people, um, you don't know what's going on. You're learning a lot. And it just takes, to me, it takes away that ability. I mean, we work as a board as, as a whole, and we all work with Tom. So, it, to me, my personal opinion is it makes sense to be able to have that experience for various members. Potentially someone who's like, I'm interested, but two years is a long commitment. It opens that door. But mostly, I mean, it's really hard coming on and literally turning around and having to make that vote that's locked in for two years. It makes more sense to me for someone to be on the board for a year and be able to understand who is working, how they work, and how things are working. Do we wanna keep the current roles, or do we feel that there's a better ability to maybe mix things up? I think that's where my question of that came. A lot of it was from, it was really hard. Like, I'd never met you guys, and I was like, okay, I'm basically being told who I'm going to elect in that case, because I have no idea, right? And I'm not gonna do it if I'm just getting on the board. But I, my interest may be piqued along that way. And then at that time, you're, you're signing four new people on to ask them to do the same thing. four new people on to ask them to do the same thing. It's really, it's bizarre, in my opinion. But.
Can I get a clarification? Are we talking about modifying this such that it's just the president that's going to a two-year term? Or is it all?
All.
All current two-year officers. Okay, just want to be sure.
I do understand the, because that was a question of mine too, was since the current officers were elected under the current policy, would we have to stick with that policy for the two-year cycle? I don't personally find an issue with doing it yearly, because it could end up being the same person. My experience being on a board, it was a different type of board, obviously. It was a nonprofit. But we actually had a one-year limit, because we didn't want anyone to feel ownership over that role. And I think it's good to get new perspectives if someone's willing to step in and take over. If not, then, you know, it continues.
I'm good with the two years as is. To me, this is a position, all three of the positions are, you're taking on extra added responsibilities. And I commend people for doing that. So there is a little discomfort if you're a new board member and you don't know the people particularly well. But then I tend to trust the existing people. And the fact that they're volunteering to do this in the first place, to take on this extra responsibility, once again, to me is, speaks to a little bit about their desires. The other point is, I think, two years is not that much time. And especially, I'll say, board president, it's important to have continuity there. One year, I don't think if, if you happen to be changing people, it, it probably takes a good year to learn the facets of being a board president. I know Craig does a lot of extra stuff that, behind the scenes, that's required for that, that position. So, and then I also believe in, if there is an issue with performance, that they're given, a person is given an opportunity to correct that. And I don't think you can do that in a year. So I think two years, to me, is the right length of term. Understand, totally understand the discomfort it, it puts on new board members. But, but I tend to trust the existing board members and the people that are volunteering to take on that additional responsibility.
I guess I'll speak up. So I'm also for maintaining two years. My three reasons are, again, I think stability and continuity is important. There's issues that overlap over years. There could be contracts, capital projects that are pretty complex that you have to have knowledge on. I will acknowledge it's, I think for everybody, when you get elected, the first thing you do is basically seat a new board of people you don't know. But even with one year, every other year will be doing that, basically. So that will still exist. I also think having a two-year term for the majority of the time keeps the board focused on governance. We're not really talking about elections now. To Rob's point, if someone's not performing and they can't perform, there are provisions where we could do that. But that way, the board is not always in transition or, you know, we're not talking about this except for every two years. And then I do take the recommendation from I A S B to heart. They've got, well, have experience in this with best practices. And they've seen a lot of boards. And so when they make a recommendation, unless we have a very compelling reason internally to go against that, I think that we should take their recommendations to heart.
I'm, I am, I'm in favor of leaving the policy as it is. I'm always a little bit of concerned about unintended consequences, particularly when we align like I A S B or others. There's just things I don't know. Go out and, and be kind of impacted as things move forward. One, I will echo and say, I appreciate you, Rob, for saying, you know, that, that the extra work that all the officers put in. And yeah, there's a little bit from a board president, kind of like the relationship that you need to build over time with the superintendent and the other staff's kind of critical to be able to understand. Because in a lot of ways, yes, while Tom is our only employee, I work with the most with him right now and whomever the superintendent might be. So I, I kind of feel like I'm kind of like the H R department that kind of has to help make sure that their goals and objectives and what they're trying to do and are they aligning to what we are and then coaching the board into a, a, not coaching, working with the board on figuring out the right way of getting to where we are in a way that fits within the, the work and, and the responsibilities that they all have. That takes a lot to learn. So if we have an opportunity where this turns into a one-year term, that could take time. So between the glide up of learning to learn the job, being on the job, and then if there's a point where the board is somewhat contentious at any point in time and people need to kind of campaign and work through it and make big choices and that sort of stuff, that could take a month or two. So by the time you're at that point, you're really only effective and efficient for about four months at a time, which is a challenge for me to be able to kind of, I could see sitting in this seat, that could be a challenge for someone doing that. I do understand that this is an option, that someone could maintain the same seat. But I've seen plenty of boards where that becomes a bit of a hot potato over time, you know? And that, 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 that can become a challenge as they move forward and where there's continual change and adjustment. I appreciate entirely Danielle what you're talking about, because all of us were in that boat where they sit down at the chair and like, wait, what? I, I need to pick these people and it's a challenge. And, and I, I, at my time, I came in and I reached out to the existing board members and I talked to them. They said to me, hey, just FYI, I think it was the superintendent at the time. Said FYI, you're going to be doing this and it's weird. So you should reach through. So I think there's a, maybe a mechanism that we could also work on a procedure effectively with incoming board members to help glide that in a little better than it has been in the past. So. So for those reasons, I'm not in particular, as well as, I'm not reiterating things that others have said as well. So I agree with all of those.
From this policy committee, there's basically three things we can do right now. One, we can vote to try to change on it. Two, we can leave it until a year from now, because even if we, nothing's going to change till twenty twenty seven. So we can table it in one year. We can come back to it and say, all right, do we want to change this for a year? Or three, we leave it the same. That's kind of the three things that we have. Because no matter, nothing's going to change now until twenty twenty seven for those that want to change it. So, I mean, it's up to us what you guys want to do. But.
I have a question that I think is relevant. Does, so the board workshop that we have, does that happen every year or just when there's?
We try to do it every year. We've done it every year as long as, well, no.
So there's an opportunity every year to at least have discussions about?
How well somebody's doing their particular job or adjusting roles? Absolutely, yes. It also gives an opportunity for those that are in those particular roles who are like, I don't think this is working out or I need, I need more help to bring that up as well. So anyone in favor of waiting some time and voting on it prior to the twenty twenty seven date?
I don't think anything's going to change. For me personally, I don't think anything's going to change from now in a year. I don't know that we need to, I don't know that I need to revisit it. I don't think anyone's going to change-
Sorry.
Any implicit they have on this. Like I'm ready now. I don't, and we can always, if, if anyone changes their minds, we could always revisit in a year and change it again, couldn't we? I mean, if it really like came down to it, if there was something like, we're like, oh my gosh, like we made a mistake. I, I don't, it's-
Yeah, then we change this policy and then there's another policy that we would change.
The seat there.
Two point two?
Yeah, it, it, because it touches like, there's another policy that would specifically speak to then.
Yeah.
Right now, it's all tethered to board elections cycles.
I'm going to be honest. I think I'd rather just table this for a year. That's my, that's my opinion. So.
I'd like to just vote as, keep it, or I want it as is. I don't think we need to wait or reevaluate, unless someone brings it up, like you're saying. If someone wants to bring it up in a year, fine. I don't think we need to make a formal statement, say, we're going to revisit it in a year. I'd like to keep it as is.
But if, if, I guess the question is, if we either vote now and it's, and the vote goes the way it goes for whatever people choose to do at that time, right? And then it, and that's it. Or we leave it as is right now and vote in a year, so that people have had, in theory, have had time to think about it, consider it, maybe at our next board workshop, there's more discussion about it, whatever else. I'm just throwing that out there. Is that, am I interpreting that right, Raquel? Option one is to vote now. That's it. It changes the policy as a second read or first read or whatever it is. Or B, we table this for a year. Those are two effectively the binary kind of votes.
Yeah, I guess you're not. If as is, no, nothing's required.
Yeah, you could-
Right, we wouldn't do a second reading.
Right, we would.
We're just, we're not touching it.
Right. We might need to later if we're going to do that official change.
I think I'd rather vote now, like right now about where we stand on it. What?
Nothing.
I guess that was funny.
I have my own thoughts.
All right.
Proud, isn't it?
Anyone, everyone in favor of voting now, thumbs up?
Voting now?
Okay, you have enough to vote. How many? That's four vote nows? Okay, we have enough to vote now. So is that it? Is that a formal action?
That's it. So-
No, it's just consensus, all your, this is first reading. So you're, you have consensus to now make a decision. Do you want this policy revised so that we can bring it back to second reading next month and stipulate that it's a one-year term?
So now is effectively-
If there isn't consensus to do that, then we're leaving the policy as it is.
So right, so here's my question, is then next month, let's say we change it, then we have to bring two point two up for first read?
Yeah, I-
Which is the reorganization?
That's the reorganizational meeting. Even if we bring it up as one, as a first reading, that's fine from a timeline perspective, because this isn't, this isn't going to run into December. You know what I mean? So you'll be fine, because as some of you have already pointed out, it would be, impact to twenty twenty seven and then moving forward, twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine, et cetera. So.
All right, so is this just kind of a thumbs up?
Yeah.
All in favor, I, and all in favor, Nate?
Just, just, you know, if you-
The thumbs up is to change?
However you want to word it. Yeah.
I think we ought to be careful about this.
All right. Let me, let me be the moderator. Hang on. Let me play the moderator. I will, so as a board, please provide a thumbs up if you would like the policy to be changed to a one-year, one-year term for all officer positions on the board.
Okay.
That would be a thumbs up.
Oh, okay.
I can't see it.
That was-
One, two, three, four. Okay, so there's consensus to bring it back as a second reading.
Okay.
To a one-year term.
With it written as a one-year term.
So do you have that noted, please? Yeah, I want to make sure we have this. But language being changed to a one-year term of office.
For all officers.
And then we'll have to address the second policy that talks about the reorganization meeting.
Okay.
And then that's where you guys will take formal action on that. Okay.
All right, next item is dashboard. Tom, it's item six point three.
Sorry, I'm just making a note to myself real quick. Okay, um, so as promised, based on the July board vote, the power metrics, that kind of completed and shaped out everything then we've been working on for the last couple of years. So I'm not going to speak too much to it. I'm going to let my team take over the presentation of the actual dashboard. But I think this is meeting some of the dynamics that mirrors exactly what our strategic plan is focused on, while also giving the ability for the community members to dig a little deeper where, on certain parts of the strategic plan and the power metrics that people would want to look at. And then just as a quick reminder, our website will still hold all district report cards and school building report cards published by ISB. So it's all still part of that, that program. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over at this point.
So our objective was to- How about, is there supposed to be a drum roll or something like that? Do you have sound?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, to make a interactive dashboard that helped the community get to the heart of the strategic plan and see where we were in terms of progress. And we used as inspiration the D M G model. The colors are a little different, but it's essentially what you'd find in the D M G model. You can click on the mission and vision and see it. You can click on the theory of action or you can collapse it. But you can essentially dig into any one aspect of this without being overloaded cognitively with too much information. You want to just simply short circuit to the goals and the priorities, the priorities and their respective goals themselves. They're there. This particular graph, when you mouse over various data points, you'll be able to see the, the data that's behind it. So you can see that. And so that's for twenty twenty four at, twenty twenty three at fifty seven. I can't read that far. Or you can also remove some of the elements in the bottom. So if you click on math growth target, that'll go away. And you can focus on, for example, just the reading targets. And that's the case for any of these graphs.
No, I'm just, for clarity, we don't have the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty, because we're in that, we don't have it to data yet, right?
We ju, yeah, we will have it. I think we have it. We just, we can put it into the graph. We just didn't have it when we were building this, this dashboard, but I think it's available now. So we'll have it very soon. Again, we tried to distill this down to the, the essential information to minimize overload, but also give the community a pretty solid sense of what our strategic plan is and where we were in terms of our progress. Scroll down a little bit further, you'll see the individual strategies related to the priority that's selected. And then you can click on one of those and give you some more information. And then you can also see where we are in terms of our progress.
When will this go live?
It's already live.
Oh, okay.
So, um, again, continue to make adjustments to it as we learn more and continue to hone in on what works and what doesn't.
I think it looks good. I appreciate all the hard work in putting this and I like that it's engaging, so it's not just static information. You can click on things. I know we had a discussion about this a while back about making it a little more dynamic than rather just static charts. And I like that it's going to be a living document that is, because I know data will flow as we collected on certain metrics over the years. So it will be continually updated. So I think this is a good document for the community to understand the mission and track progress.
So as you're looking right, thank, thank you, Aaron. As you're looking right there, that graphic at the bottom of the screen that Holly's displaying, that's the, the model that we use to build the strategic plan with D M G. That was the inspiration for this dashboard is distilling it to the bare essentials.
So how often would this get updated? And after every like testing cycle?
You could put interim data in there, certainly. And so generally, when it comes to the testing cycles for map testing, there's fall, winter, and spring data. Right now, we're just showing spring, because that's where you're making comparison is spring to spring. I'm not sure exactly what the cadence is for priority two. Twice a year?
Three times a year.
Three times a year? So you could upload that as well. And then when it comes to priority three with the financial profile, that comes from ISB, it's only once a year.
And we're still gonna have, like, Illinois report card data on the website and all that kinda stuff.
There's, it's all linked in here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there, there are links to the Illinois report card from here, too, and we, we note that, that data is available. And just a reminder, uh, board, uh, the Illinois, uh, excuse, ISB releases the updated report cards every October. And it's always a year and a years, so it'll be reflective of last year.
Is this, I don't know if I, it, so, this is, is this a dashboard that, like, when we met with you all and we looked at Panorama, all that, is that the same thing, or is this one just, like, related to those power goals?
Power metrics, yeah.
Okay, do we still have that other dashboard, the one with, like, the static images, we talked about maybe, like, leading things to Panorama, where there's, like, the different levels, we never actually had a board discussion on it, it was the one that I asked about, but is this, is this in addition to this, is in place of it, I don't, do we even still have that other dashboard?
We have it internally.
Okay.
We still use that data. What we decided was, when looking at that particular dashboard, that was Panorama, wasn't designed to be a community-based dashboard, and it wasn't gonna work well, it worked well for the Panorama data, but it didn't work for any other data or anything. Finagling to make work. So we've got a couple of other opportunities, or other providers, too, and, um, what we needed right now.
And Panorama, um, does not have the capacity to create a public login. So we can use it and log in as staff to that dashboard, but to just make a general, like, email address for people to log into that system, um, they don't have the capacity to do that, so. We could do, that's how we ended up with some static imaging that we were able to put out, but not interactive, because they could not do that level of that anyone could log in and look at it.
Is, is the goal of, like, when you come back and, and, so these are monitoring priorities, when you guys come and do your regular presentations to us, that some of that static imagery will be pulled up in support of these goals to help so, like, this is why this is trending this certain way, we see it here, 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 and here.
Yeah, I would say, you know, I would defer to Brad and Steve on that, but this doesn't preclude us from looking at other data, especially when we're doing those updates to the board. This is just what is always available to the community when they wanna know where we are in terms of our progress on our strategic plan. Because these are the board's goals.
I got, I'm, I'm, I, I don't, I love this, this looks great, and it does reflect DMG, how it flows down, I think it's a lot more simplistic, and it gives someone the ability to go through, if they wanna kind of, like, go down. I think I'm still a little, per, aside from this, I still am a little stuck on that we've not ever had a board discussion about what a dashboard, like, that has a little bit more information for the community, or even for ourselves, like, we, I don't know where we got off of that topic, but I know last October, we had talked about having, like, a special meeting, um, where we could talk about what data was important to us, I know that these are, like, our goal datas, but just so we can have an understanding, and we're doing some of it through those presentations. Um, but I remember we had talked about what was important for, like, the community to see, and what was important to be accessible. Um, but we didn't actually have that board discussion. And so I think we're, for me, it's missing some of the, if this was gonna replace the other one, it's missing some of the stuff, I, I get this for the power metrics. But I'm just wondering, like, is there an and to it, or are we doing away with that, does that feel like it's better just to leave it like this? Because we never really kinda dove into that.
DMG's advice to us was to stick to this.
For the public? Okay. Is there a reason why?
Yeah, this is, we are, these are the goals that we're stating that we're gonna make progress on. This is all measuring our success, and it isn't to say that the various other metrics don't inform our progress in those regards, but they are subcomponents of the, of the goal. And, um, they're not necessarily something that, um, inform, you know, any one thing, that whether it's going, if it's improving or decreasing, indicates whether or not you're making real progress. Ultimately, we're focused on priority one point one and goal one point one. And making those targets. Anything else is just a metric, it's information to help us see, it's a collective piece, all these pieces of information to see if when we're moving in a positive direction on priority one and goal one point one, do these metrics help us understand that we're making that particular progress? Well, no, when we get there, when we get to the goal, or we meet the target, I'm, I'm spinning here, but the premise here is that the goals are what we wanna communicate, and our progress to the goals are what we wanna communicate to the community, and whether or not we're hitting those targets. The metrics are some information as we're going along the way, that may be increasing or decreasing, that can help us contextualize our progress and fine tune things, but it's not necessarily something that the community needs to see in real time. That's something that we, as, you as a board, and we as a staff, need to keep an eye on and check in periodically through the year, but ultimately, measuring our success is this dashboard right here.
I don't think I understood that that's what we were going, that it was going to affect the dashboard, and I didn't vote through the DMG thing anyways, but I don't think that was part of my personal understanding, because I personally don't, and I'm, I'm not the expert, so take that for what it is. But, I think as a community member, I would want to understand a little bit more than just the, the three main goals, to understand how, where my, the district my students are attending, how it kind of looks altogether, um, with some more data points. And then there was, there was quite a bit more before, and I understand the need for us to be able to understand the health of the district, not by looking at fifteen different goals, but three main goals, I understand that point for the board, but for the community, I, I was not understanding that that was what the community was also getting at the same time, so I think that's where my questions kinda come from, I understand what you're saying, though, I understand what DMG's points were.
There's also a lot of information available on the Illinois school report card.
Okay.
A lot.
Okay.
Illinois, by the way, is perha, probably the best in terms of the amount of data that it offers to the public, and the way it's organized, and the way it can be consumed and compared to others. We have that resource that most other schools in other states just don't have.
See that linked here, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Alright, action item seven point one, adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget. Tony?
Thank you, uh, Holly, if you wouldn't mind pulling up that slide deck. How much has changed since we spoke last on the twenty twenty six budget? Action before you, this evening, would be for adoption. Recap where we've been over the summer. We held a public hearing last month on the budget, we also held a public hearing on fund transfers, we'll take separate action on those after we re, review the budget. Uh, we shared, uh, with the community, a tentative budget in June, and it has been on display all summer. Uh, we've, of course, gone through several revisions since then, and, um, this is our best estimate as to how things will play out for this fiscal year. And of course, it's built on a whole host of assumptions, um, and we'll see how they play out, but this is our plan for the year. Total funds are a hundred thirty-two point two million in revenue, over one hundred forty-two point six million dollars in expenditures, or that includes on behalf payments and totaling some twenty-four and a half million. It's money that doesn't actually touch our coffers, it's money that the state of Illinois pays on behalf of the board for our, the co, the costs of our teachers' salaries for their pensions. So that leaves a fund balance difference of ten million dollars, and so, that is more revenue, or, excuse me, no more expenditures than we're taking in. Uh, and that is due entirely to us spending on the Warm, Safe, Dry Plan, and that is us spending fund balance to, to, uh, make those, uh, capital improvements. Good news for us is that, um, we are paying off all of our bonds this year, so there's about four million dollars outstanding, that'll be paid off by January. And when that's complete, taxes will go down, the tax rate, the rate that the school board taxes, as we talked about last month, will go down in total about ten percent over the last two years. Um, operating funds, can you go back to that, Holly, for just a second? This is what we focus on in terms of the day-to-day operations of the school district, total uh, one hundred three point two million in revenues, with a ninety-eight point four million in expenditures. We are transferring fourteen million out of those operating funds, the education fund and the O and M fund, to fund those capital projects and the Warm, Safe, Dry Plan, so we expect a deficit of nine point two million in those funds. Now, it isn't a deficit in the sense that we're spending too much more than we're taking in, that we have a structural issue, this is a one-time expense. If we go over to the next slide, it'll demonstrate that for us. The blue bars being revenue, the green bars being expenses, you see in twenty twenty six, the year that, at hand, we're spending more than we're taking in. The yellow line that crosses the bars, you see decreases in twenty twenty six, edges upward slightly in twenty eight, and then back down in twenty nine. So our fund balance is going down significantly, but not so much that, um, we have to worry about tax anticipation warrants as we did in years past, so we're, we're spending down that fund balance, but being sure that we don't put ourselves in a precarious position where we don't have enough cash to weather a severe storm, or to pay our bills.
So you're comfortable with that level of fund balance?
I don't want it to go any lower than it is, I don't want it to go any lower than it is right now, but, um, or would be, but, um, yeah, I am comfortable with it. So, um, it's, it's, yes. Then, uh, so that's all of our funds, and then I'll show you the operating funds, and explain this to you. Again, the blue bars being revenue, the green bar being expenditures, the yellow line being our fund balance. Those red bars introduced here are other financing, and those are the fund transfers, and you can see, we've been doing fund transfers for capital projects for the last several years. Moving money generally out of the operations and maintenance fund to capital projects to pay. You see a pretty significant increase in that amount in twenty six. And then, declining in twenty seven and increasing through twenty nine. And that's the operating fund commitment to funding Warm, Safe, Dry in future years, so that we can afford to execute those projects. Um, this year being the largest increase, the, the largest amount transferred, uh, but it will continue to grow at about a fifteen percent increase each year, so that we can afford to fund those projects. And it looks like we're gonna have to have a couple more, we were originally expected to have five years of Warm, Safe, Dry, we're probably gonna need to have six or seven years at least, because of some other issues that I'll talk about here briefly when it comes to revenue. So we can go to the next slide. As I mentioned earlier, we're transferring ten million dollars from the education fund to the capital projects fund, one-time permanent fund transfer, and a little bit more than four million dollars from O and M for the same purpose. This simply recaps all that, we do expect a slight deficit in twenty seven, a surplus in twenty eight, and a deficit again in twenty nine. Now, those aren't structural deficits, those are deficits for us, from us after transferring those funds into capital projects, when the timing of those projects and the payments for those projects come due.
Can you repeat that, Tony, so the reason why it's deficit surplus deficit is more about the timing of the payment?
Capital projects, yeah. It isn't a structural deficit in the sense that we would have to file a deficit reduction.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I also did forecast, uh, the ISB financial profile. And, um, as you know, we came from a financial, uh, watch, a number of years ago, over a decade ago, and we've been in financial recognition for the last several years. We've gotten away from the tax anticipation warrants, and in the last couple of years, we've enjoyed a perfect four point oh rating. Unfortunately, it appears, we're not gonna maintain that four point oh perfect rating. Uh, it's gonna be three point nine for the foreseeable future, and the reason being is we're moving this money into capital projects, and we're spending those fund balances down, we won't have enough days on, days cash on hand to have a perfect rating in that regard. We're gonna do really well with debt, we're gonna get a perfect score when it comes to short-term and long-term debt, because we won't have any. Uh, next slide, please. We are losing money, however, we're expected to lose money in what we're called state categoricals, and those are reimbursements for what we spend in transportation and special education primarily. The state is facing some fiscal troubles, and it can't afford to necessarily fully fund education, the priority for the state is an EBF dollars, or the ed, the evidence-based funding formula. So a lot of districts around the state are receiving new money, but a lot of districts like us that are more affluent, being a tier four district, where our, the amount of money that we have on hand exceeds what they consider to be adequate, they're pulling back some of that funding, and they're not putting any new money into these bins for categoricals. So that what that means is that, is costs go up each year, and we turn in our claims for reimbursement, our costs certainly go up every year, especially in transportation and special ed, that's where our costs go up the most. If that happens statewide, and if there's the same amount of money in that fund to pay all those claims each year, the amount of money that everybody gets goes down. Most school districts that are getting more new money in their evidence-based funding formula, they can, you know, it's kind of moving, you know, Robin Peter to pay Paul, but for us, the total amount of money that we're gonna get from the state is gonna be going down, so we'll have to keep a close eye on that. Of course, things from a federal level have been a little unstable and uncertain. Uh, I don't expect that we'll lose any federal money in the next fiscal year, uh, but I do believe that the, at least the increase in terms of federal aid is going to be very, very slight, if, and, if at all. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we're seeing rising costs in special ed and transportation. Um, we do see, um, some staffing shortages for paraprofessionals, but uh, as Steve shared with Best, but this evening, we've been making progress on hiring paraprofessionals, and so, we're hopeful that, um, the end is in sight in that regard. The next few years, we expect enrollment to remain stable, about fifty-two hundred. Um, it has been bouncing up and down just slightly, you know, with a handful of students here and there in the last couple of years, and we expect that to be the case, so meaning it might go up by thirty or forty students in one year and go down by thirty or forty students in the next, depending on how things shake out. Um, and we'll be able to continue to make progress on Warm, Safe, Dry without adding new debt. And the last slide. Is enrollment is down sl, at seven percent since twenty twenty, but we expect it to be stable ahead, and so, as I said, the last couple of years, it's fluctuated just a bit, and we expect that to remain the case. Class sizes on average for our K through eight core classes is tw, about twenty-three, last year it was twenty-two point nine, and that's the lowest in recorded history when it comes to class sizes, so we're historically low, as it has been. Uh, and where you have about seven hundred three FTE, which continues to increase. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we'll retire all of our debt by January. But depending how things shake out, especially with that revenue from the state, and how much we lose, we might have to extend out our investments into Warm, Safe, Dry, so that we have the capacity to do so. That, of course, I assume, when we do, will be subject to construction inflation, and that's
Significant.
Takes a chunk out of what we can get done, but that's the reality that we face. The sooner we do it, the less we'll spend, but we have to be careful about putting ourselves in a precarious position of overspending with maintaining that fund balance, we don't wanna spend, we need that fund balance to pay our bills and pay anything unexpected that comes in the hand. Uh, we don't wanna get back to where we were with tax anticipation warrants, it just wastes money, and limits what we can do, it really ties our hands in terms of options. I think that's it, unless you have questions.
So, any other questions? State student enrollment, you said, is down seven percent from twenty twenty-two. Was the enrollment down in twenty twenty-four? And I don't, that's just from, I mean, that's five years ago, so I was just curious, like, you know, what was it, was it down in twenty twenty-one, I'm, I'm not gonna ask for twenty twenty-one, so I guess it might, and then.
If you wouldn't mind, Holly, if you could go to the, the agenda item, and then pull up the budget.
Page nine?
If you, yeah, click on the budget summary there, not the dot, yeah, the link. I think it's section E two or something like that. On the left-hand side, you'll, you can use the table of contents, will take you right to the, the history and the forecast. So I'll look for E two. I guess it's not E two, it's like, it's E five, I'm sorry.
Yes.
There it is. Can you zoom in on the level just a little bit, please? Yeah, perfect. On twenty four, we lost about. Fifteen students, but we, in twenty five, we were expecting, so that last year, we were expecting to lose, as I recall, like thirty students, but we lost only one. So a projection would have called for thirty fewer students, but thirty more showed up than we expected. And um it's unclear what our enrollment is at present, but it's fifty two thirty seven forecasted and I think we're pretty close to that right now.
I was gonna ask, I know we don't do the official enrollment till, was it October?
It is, yeah. And so what, October first is the, what they call the fall, fall housing report. That's when statewide we collect enrollments and so that we can make comparisons. And that way you can compare year to year where you were in terms of enrollment. So we'll have the official enrollments on October first. And I'll rerun the, the models and the numbers and whatnot and share an enrollment forecast with you, an enrollment projection.
So one thing I noticed going through this is, so I believe wasn't twenty twenty like a record graduating class or that was sort of like a peak moment in enrollment at. Batavia High School or around that time? I thought I remember going to commence, we had like five hundred and thirty kids.
My first year was, from what I understand, my first year here was the largest graduating class we had had.
Was it?
Yeah.
Well, one thing I noticed is our enrollment is going down, but we actually have more F T E than we did. Is that correct than what is the state?
Yeah, that's true.
So that's contributing to the low class size.
It is, yeah. I'll point out too, it's like, so yeah, that the largest his graduating class in history rolled out of the doors in the last few years. And you'll see that the way that this is broken out is the yellow is high school, blue is middle school and green is elementary. You can see how elementary enrollments are fluctuating. They went down and then they're coming back up and they, they bounce around. You see enrollment. At the middle school is, was relatively small last year, but has now started increases, kids matriculate. And overall, as of declining birth rates, the high school enrollment has been going down for a few years.
But it, I mean, you have a very good crystal ball, but it's a tricky thing because I think I remember one of these presentations that was like, well, we're going down. And now we're sort of kind of leveling off a little bit at a level, you know, and now we're getting all this growth of building. Couple of big developments in town. So it is sort of a tricky game of.
It is a tricky game. And in nationwide, birth rates are declining. But I do expect that, um you know, with some of these new developments, more or less, I don't think it will fully offset declining birth rates, but it'll slow it down. I do expect that for the foreseeable future, our enrollment is gonna be right around fifty two hundred. That's about as accurate as it can get in terms of any projection.
So um I apologize. So you said it's about average class sizes, twenty three K through eighth core classrooms?
Yeah. Yes. And the reason why we, I don't do averages on high school classes is there are a lot of sections.
Right.
With really small uh enrollments and really large enrollments. And so it really skews averages.
So a question, if you have a co-taught class. How does that figure in? Like, so if I have a co-taught class to the E L students in fifth grade. And that, that class is twenty four kids, let's say. So you have a co-taught. So now I'm just asking, is that now two teachers or how, how is that?
It's by section, it's not by assigned teacher. So we're looking at the average of the number of students in a section, not assigned to a cheap teacher. But overall, when we look at our total F T E, we do a ratio of how many students we have versus how many staff we have and we keep an eye on that ratio. We look at teachers and then we look at support staff and then we look at the total and we map that out over time and we keep an eye on it. And our ratios are as low as they've ever been in that regard. But in this particular case, when I say our class size is an average of twenty three, that's the section. It's the kids assigned into that classroom for that core section, whether or not there's one teacher in there or there's two. That's the average number of students in a section.
So if there's twenty three kids in a section and there's two teachers, we're not saying that brings it down to twelve point five.
Exactly.
That's what I was saying, like, what's the average? Like, I didn't know, like, if those two teachers. Let's just say fifth grade, oh my god, let's say fifth grade J B Nelson, you have twenty teachers. And then you have two E L like that co-teach, so then that's twenty two teachers. So is it twenty, so is it the class size with the twenty two or is it the class size of twenty?
Twenty.
That's what I was asking. So then. So we have the seven hundred and three full time staff. Those are just. I guess I just wanna make sure, because the full time staff is certified teachers?
It's full time equivalents. And so there are, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know, but probably something like seven hundred eighty, seven hundred ninety staff members. Of those hun, seven hundred and three full time equivalents and that includes all staff.
Because some people are like a point five. I remember like asking the question, how can you be a half time, half employee, you know?
So you're saying all employee, so that's office staff. So if I'm a full time office staff.
No, I'm not saying you're full time. I'm saying full time equivalent. You could be office staff and only work four hours a day, you would count as point five.
No, but what if I am full time?
Then you, then you count as one point oh.
That's what I'm saying. So it's full time.
Equivalent.
Equivalent. So, so. J B Nelson has. A, I guess, so here's my question. So J B Nelson has full time equivalent. So let's say there's two full time secretaries. Um do you also count administrators and librarians? So anyone in that building then is considered, that's full time?
Nope.
No.
Anyone?
Equivalent?
Yes.
Full time, is equivalent?
The number of hours you work a day essentially.
Okay, so. So the average is the twenty three to full time equivalent or?
Nope. When I, when I find the average, I am not looking at staffing at all. I'm looking at sections. So if I walked around J B Nelson's school in your example and I said, hey, there's twenty kids in that first grade classroom. But there's two teachers who work in that classroom on a daily basis. And there's thirty kids in that fifth grade section and there's one teacher who worked in there, that would, you know, be a big difference. But I'm only counting the number of classrooms essentially where kids are assigned. I'm not counting the number of employees that are in the building or assigned to those sections.
So then if you were to go, I guess for Tolo, you, do you only count the core classrooms? You don't count the, like, uh wood or art or?
All right, so P E sections are usually larger, they're like forty and then there are band sections that are even much larger. So we're not looking at any of those sections. We're only looking at core classes, meaning. Bulldog block, homeroom, those sorts of things. How many kids are in those classrooms? On a, basically on a team. So if I went to Mr. Thomas's classroom and there was twenty eight kids in there.
You love it?
That's how I'm counting it by, but if Mr. Thomas was working with a co-teacher, it doesn't matter. We're counting that.
In that classroom.
Was in that classroom.
Thank you. I was kind of a little, I didn't understand like how we got to the twenty three.
It is confusing. Now, one thing I will point out, and when we're looking at seven hundred three F T E. We rely extremely heavily on outsourcing in this district. So if you went to Geneva, for example, and they have a similar number of students enrolled. We're gonna have a much lower F T E than they, because they have their own, they run their own buses. They have to employ mechanics and bus drivers and dispatchers, all those people who do transportation. For us, that's outsourced. Same goes for custodial. Many school districts run their own custodial services and they have those people on staff. We outsource that. We have our maintenance folks on staff, but our custodial are outsourced. And in addition, our food service is outsourced. So it's, you have, when you're comparing school districts to one another, you have to be really careful about what you're comparing to. So we have a larger percentage of purchased services or buying those services from. Uh Illinois Central, from G S, uh G S F and from organic life. And so those costs are higher. So salaries and benefits in Geneva would be higher. So you just, for, it's just, my point is simply being, making comparisons to other school districts. Or looking at some of those students to staff ratios can be really tricky.
So one other question in like all these projections as far as like payroll and all that stuff. Has B P S ever been one hundred percent fully staffed to like, let's say payroll is, I'm just gonna say like five million, just let's say that for the year. Have we ever been like fully staffed where it's been five million? Or do we always have like? I bet it's like one or two salaries is gonna make a drastic change, but you know, I'm just curious.
Yes, in twenty twenty, we were fully staffed. Now, we'll have somebody leave and then a couple of weeks or, you know, a few days later, we'll hire somebody else behind them. You know, so there's always, you know, some sort of churn. Uh but I would consider us fully staffed, you know, in twenty twenty. And when the, after the pandemic hit and, you know, things in the market changed, we suffered from some pretty serious and chronic vacancies. In all areas of staffing, especially for psychologists and um other related services like um.
Yell.
Yell and nursing and paraprofessionals and campus monitors. I mean, it was everything all at once. And just in the last year or two, I think we've, all that has kind of, uh we've been able to address all that and get everybody on staff that we want to, with the exception of. About twelve, is it twelve?
It's actually, as of tomorrow, it should be ten point nine three F T E.
Paraprofessionals.
We had a meeting tonight where I had to share that number, that's why I know that, that's the only reason why.
Like an arm?
I would like to say Raquel, Raquel, this is the first year since COVID that we were fully staffed with our licensed. Uh personnel this year, which is incredibly exciting. Carrie would attest to that in many ways. As with the staff at Rotolo, who has not had psychologists for some, fully staffed in psychologists for several years.
We didn't have any psychologists, I think, at R M S for last two years, two years, which is very, very challenging. So we're in, we're, you know, we've got some improvements to make, but we're, we're making good progress.
So when do you think we need to reevaluate the warm, safe, dry and extend it?
We're going to have to do it on an annual basis. We're gonna have to kind of.
That's what I'm saying, like when.
Play it by year.
Like, you know, because I know you're gonna work on everything. So that's what, I was just curious, like, when would you recommend we say? Like in December, like, hey, we need to look at this and evaluate.
We always need to be a year ahead. So Mark needs a pretty long leeway to make these things happen and we're, you know, we have to find, we have to. You know, architects have to design plans and engineers have to, you know, figure out how all the things fit together and then we have to bid those projects and line up that work. So we're always on a one year plus um runway. But each year that we're adopting our budget, we're gonna have to play it by ear in terms of. All right, how much can we put toward warm, safe, dry this year and next year? What's safe, what's dangerous, what could we have shovel ready if things change, you know, it's gonna be a year to year thing.
But it's safe to say it's changing.
It's changing, yeah.
I have a question about the major capital projects for the current year. It lists the H C Storm improvements and the Rotolo and high school L R C renovations. But then it also has Louise White improvements. Is that? What's happening next summer?
Yes, and so some of those bills will start coming due in this fiscal year and we have to have money available in fiscal year twenty six to start paying. Even though that work won't be anywhere near done until we're, you know, about this point in twenty seven, fiscal twenty seven.
And part of that is gonna be uh similar to what happened at H C S, Louise White crews will be standing ready at, as soon as staff and students dismiss for the summer, they're going in. Um and so that's where some of that fiscal year billing comes in this fiscal year.
Mark's, Mark and his team did an excellent job. We knew we were a little aggressive in terms of what you could just practically cram into one summer. And they did some pretty phenomenal work and, you know, credit to the H C Storm staff because they're enduring some. You know, there's some punch list items that they're enduring, like air conditioning, you know, in the office kind of thing, you know, they've got a temporary solution there, but. Um. I, I'm, you know, we've got, it's, it's a lot of work to do in one, in one summer.
I mean, you said warm, safe, dry, you'd say cool, safe.
But that's what they're signing up for. We're getting rewarm guys.
She's appearing at the comedy boat.
And her email.
Other questions?
I, I just wanna say thank you, Tony, for putting this document together and the time I've been on the board, which is not that long. I think from a ability to access the information, understand it for someone who's not an accountant or doesn't have, uh looking at financial statements. It's fairly clear to understand and follow. You do a nice job of high level, but then if you want the data. And the one thing I will say is, you know, a common thing we talk about is transparency. And if, you know, if you own a home or a property, you're paying your property taxes twice a year and we have a portion of that, obviously. I would encourage everyone to review this and understand it because uh. I'm proud of the position we're in. We're paying our bills, we're in excellent financial position. Despite two failed referendums, we're still able to make improvements to make our students warm, safe and dry, hopefully cool too soon. Um but this is a document that I really, if someone wanted to learn about the district. And where our priorities are, this is an excellent place to start, I believe.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. And we're also, uh you know, I was hoping to have it done, but we're not quite there yet. This fall, we will publish this in an interactive format online. It's not too dissimilar from our dashboard. It's hope, hopefully it'll make this information more accessible from, you know, from a reader standpoint for those who may have disabilities that might have. That inhibit them from reading this easily in a Google Doc. It also makes it responsive on a phone and it will also make it easily translated as well. So I'm excited about that. It'll come at some point late this fall.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adopt fiscal year twenty twenty six budget as presented.
So moved.
Motion by, who was that? Danielle, thank you. Second by?
Second.
Second by Kristen. Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Sliver?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Fasiki?
Yes.
Arlandu?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Gero?
Yes.
All right. Uh Tony, can you lead us in the resolution for permanent transfer to the capital projects fund?
Already. Yes, we did. And so that was obviously a key feature of this budget and this is just to make this. Official and clear that we're implementing this budget. The board is directing the administration. To make those transfers now and immediately so that money is available in the con, capital projects fund. Uh as the budget prescribes.
So it'd be really hard to say no to this one since you just approved a budget that said yes.
Kinda be.
All right, are there any questions? No. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution to transfer ten million dollars from the education fund. And four million forty eight thousand dollars from the operation and maintenance fund to the capital projects fund.
Motion.
Motion by Rob, second by?
Second.
Second by Aaron. Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Sliver?
Yes.
Fasiki?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Gero?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Arlandu?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you.
Um one more thing, Holly. Sorry, one second, I forgot, there's one last slide on that deck. Holly.
Am I gonna change my vote?
Yeah. I just wanted to give you a heads up of what's coming next.
Okay.
Very next month, Josh is gonna present you an uh request of authorization to begin the twenty twenty seven budget officially. So we're gonna start on next year straight away. Well, as I mentioned earlier, Raquel, we'll bring you that enrollment projection in October. We'll also bring you actual five year financial forecast. What's cool about this new budget, there's three years in there, so it was actually a very helpful exercise. We've never done that before where you can see a little bit of the forecast. In the budget, but we'll actually bring you a full five year forecast in October. That'd be followed by the tax levy. So this budget sets essentially what we assume, may all of our assumptions come true with the tax levy. So more. There'll be a formal adoption and, you know, those sorts of things when it comes to the tax levy in November. But you adopted this budget and you're kind of setting those pieces in motion already. The administrative team will bring you probably a draft staffing plan in January, maybe February. But we'll be again back to you in June and July and August with preliminary and tentative budgets. So we'll repeat the process again. And we'll have more conversations about where things fit with warm, safe, dry and how all the pieces fit together. So, thanks. Sorry about that.
I'll forgive you this time. Like it's me that has to forgive you. All right, uh board comments, so to administration, first eight point one, Tom, anything?
Um so just like to say thank you to all the operations teams as we just discussed. Uh the opening of school year and our, some of our buildings had uh some work done over the summer. Uh just wanted to say thank you to all those teams and our, our partners who help keep our B, uh buildings clean. And ready to receive people. Um they did a tremendous job. So I just wanted to say thank you to that. And our buildings were, uh it was great being around. It's been a busy opening, but uh it's been awesome to see all the energy, energy. And smiling faces coming back into the buildings and that's not possible without our staff, all of our teachers, our staff. And our building leaders uh working together to make sure that's. All of our teachers, our staff, and our building leaders, uh, working together to make sure that students were coming in well-received for day one. And so I have to say, the energy was contagious, and at the same time, walking around, I felt, it felt very focused. Um, like there was a, just a really strong sense of purpose and community at every building I visited. I loved it, so. And so having said that, I'm going to keep it brief. Uh, I'm just going to pivot to, uh, something else. I wanted to share some important words, you know, on my final note. Our community experienced a terrible tragedy this weekend. Uh, the district is here to support our students, our staff, and our families, if any of them were impacted by this tragic incident. I want to thank our student services team and our mental health service teams and leadership behind it, who quickly prepared to support our students and staff on Monday, um, with very minimal information. As, as many of you may be aware, this is still an ongoing matter, and so as a school district, it's difficult to sometimes do some laser pinpointing ser, uh, supports. But we want to make sure that people get that message that we have supports here for anybody who needs those resources. So to all of our teams in our buildings and, and to the leadership team here who dropped everything to help prepare for this, thank you. To our city colleagues, I also wanted to make sure we said thank you for their work in supporting our students and our families, and the communication that they could try to make available and the information during this, uh, terrible time. And then as a final reminder to our students and our families, the district messenger was sent out on Sunday evening, uh, with shared resources and supports and points of contact. I really encourage any of our families or our students to utilize the resources and supports that this board has approved, uh, over the last few years, and is, stands ready to support our kids. And so on the final note, I also urge that the broader community, uh, remember that this matter is still an ongoing investigation by our law, local law enforcement. I just ask everybody that you check in with your child, um, see how they're doing. Remember, utilize everything that we, we are here to help and provide for Batavia.
Okay.
Uh, so I just want to say thanks to everybody, and that's it.
Board comments?
Uh, one thing is, we talked about putting on the agenda a discussion about, and I just want to be clear so that Katie can get it right on her list, the, um, consultants. Just generally speaking out about consultants, is that what we're putting on?
Yep.
Okay.
Like if there's, the way I read it is, what we would want as board members to be able to make an effective decision about expending those dollars. Is that a reasonable way of summarizing it, so that if we, and we would have to discuss to tell them what we think we would need as a unit, as a group?
Is BPSU part of that, or just consultants in general?
I understood it as consultants in general, not specifically them, but whatever framework we, or goals we would ask.
Because some of them are used for BPSU, so I don't know.
I think it would apply to them, is my guess.
Okay.
But that's part of the discussion.
Okay. Uh, and then my other question is, I saw that Tom had shared BIC dates, and I couldn't remember how we had decided how we were going to divide those up.
I think it's based on when, I mean, I think it was, I'm available, I'll take this date. It was not getting assigned specific ones, because I don't know. It's a Saturday morning. I don't know anybody's Saturday mornings.
Should we let you and Tom know, or?
Yeah, just let, yeah, if you let me, me and Tom know, and we'll sort out.
Do you guys know the dates? Did we get the dates?
Yeah.
Clear it out.
I messed up. Can we?
We can, we can. I think it's, it wasn't one of Tom's updates, so.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to say was, kind of in relationship to what Tom said, that it's been a heavy start to the year, um, for some of our community, and I'm thankful that we live in a district that has mental health supports in place. And I would just encourage anyone that's struggling, because, you know, there's ripples to this. There are teachers that are affected by this too, um, to reach out if you're struggling. And I just hope we have a great year. I'm excited.
Yeah, it was an interesting start of the school year for myself personally. It was the first time in fifteen years I didn't have a child, uh, going to a Batavia school. So it was a new, new experience for myself.
I'm here for you, Rob, if you need it. I've, I've been through this before.
Uh, but it did make me reflect, and I actually thought about, you know, Jacob's kindergarten teacher was Mrs. Biaggi and at Grace McQuain, and Julia's was Mrs. Meeland, and I also at Grace McQuain, so. They kind of gave them their start in, in school and education, so very appreciative of that, and, you know, way too many teachers to name throughout, but so many great teachers that they had throughout the, throughout their tenure here in Batavia School. So I just kind of reflected on that this year as, as I went to the, um, opening day, and I did go to Louise White School, which was really cool, at Katie and her family, uh, as well as a number of other parents out there, and talked to them, and did engage them, uh, for the most part, and I, and I get it, they're not going to really maybe get too much feedback, but I did ask them how their registration and, you know, the communication with the school went, and, um, for almost all the feedback was positive. And I, like I said, I know they're not going to necessarily always share their, their opinions, uh, but, uh, at least what I got gathered from them, it was pretty positive. So, um, kudos to the Louise White team for, for that, and, uh, cool, cool tradition there with the ringing of the bell, so really enjoyed that, so. Positive vibes for the first day of school. I think you said that, Drew, so.
Uh, yeah, just thanks to everyone who helped get the school year, all the schools ready for this school year, and I just hope everyone has a healthy and safe school.
Uh, I want to welcome all the new teacher staff and families who are attending BPS one-on-one. Welcome to the family. I want to thank everybody that prepared for opening day. There's a million things that have to go right, and, uh, like Mr. Arlandu said, I got a lot of feedback that things were good, running smoothly. That's a challenging thing to do to start the year. And, um, so I want to wish everyone a great year, and then I do want to recognize, Mr. Arlandu and I are both taking children to college tomorrow, and there's a lot of families right now that, uh, kids are leaving to move on to that next chapter, whether it be school or work, or, uh, going to the service. And so I want to recognize that, and I'll just share one funny story with that, that even after you leave BPS one-on-one, you're still part of the family, and that, uh, the first day of school for my younger two, I took my oldest daughter, who's now technically a junior at Missouri because of all her advanced credits she got here at Batavia. We had lunch, and her old music teacher from JB Nelson came up and recognized Emma and gave her a big hug, and they had a nice chat. So that was like kind of a nice full-circle moment there, that, uh, but yeah, I just want to wish everyone a good year, and then I do also want to recognize the heaviness. And as, uh, Kristen said, there are resources for people, so don't be afraid to reach out if you need help.
Uh, yeah, I also just want to, um, recognize the tragedy in the community and just say that my hearts, my heart and thoughts are with, um, all the students, staff, and families that are, um, affected. So, uh, yeah, I didn't really prepare anything today, but I just kind of thinking of, um, all the first days of school, I want to say, all the work that was done at Storm, it just like blew me away. I was, I was emotional there, kind of, because my kids go there, and I've been there since, you know, Ally was there in two thousand sixteen, I think, two thousand seventeen. And it's just amazing, and then I had all these kids talking about how like, it's so amazing in here, and they were like commenting on the, some of the safety features of it. They recognize that sort of stuff, like how when you walk in, there's doors, and then you can't, you know, and they were saying, it's like, it's like a hotel in here, and I was just like, I was dying, because it was like fabulous. So part of me was like, oh, and then the other part of me is like, if we only had the referendum, we could do so much more, but, you know, I'm grateful for what was done, and it was mind-blowing to see how fast things were done. I know you guys are in the field, and like, maybe it's to some people, it's normal, but I was just like, how did all of this get done in that small time period? It's just.
It's just kind of scary. It's like, whoa, we got a lot to do here.
It's, it really, and like, I mean, I can just, uh, from the outside, the difference. It's just, it's awesome, and as a parent sending my child to that school specifically, I cannot comment on the feeling, the relief of knowing that all of the doors, I went around that because I had to walk my, my kiddo around the back, all of the doors are new, all the windows, the entryway, like, it's, it's so safe-looking, and it's just, that is a huge relief, because every year it was hard to think about those entryways and doors not opening, closing properly and all that type of stuff, so. Um, I just want to say a huge shout-out to the work that was done, and I can't even wrap my mind around everything from Storm to the LRCs. Hope everyone's, uh, year is starting off right. You had made a comment about always being in the family. Um, I just actually said goodbye to one of our previous students, Martin Byrne. And it just reminds me, you know, every time they come back, they never left Batavia, like, they, they're so engaged in not just the school, but the community, all of like the various vulnerable groups, and like, that's the student we want to know that comes back. We're always like, I hope that the, the people that leave this district come back to work here, possibly be teachers. And it just is such an immense pride to know that, like, they're choosing to come back and be so active. Um, and I just, I know there's other kids like them too, and it just, it was just amazing to kind of like reflect on that as they're leaving to Philadelphia tomorrow, so. Yeah, you, you can, it's, it's nice when people do stay in the family, so. Um, other than that, yeah, I just hope that everyone's years are smoothly.
Okay, uh, to the surviving family, friends, neighbors, witnesses, and loved ones of the man who lost his life to gun violence in Batavia on Saturday, I see you. As a gun violence survivor myself, I know the healing in the aftermath of this trauma will be some of the most arduous and most injuring work of your lives, requiring immense community support. I am proud our district has committed to doing our healing work beside you and all who are touched by this loss. To the public, I hope you will reach out to the district and elsewhere for support around this tragedy. Whether it's overhearing or seeing an uninformed comment, or wondering how we can help, let's speak up, let's ask. Let's acknowledge that gun violence affects all families, and that by virtue of taking place in America, this was not an isolated incident. It was ru, one rooted in deep systemic failures from which most of us benefit, in which we all participate, and of which we are all a part. I urge our administration and the public to stay informed and questioning of the social media commentary and the in-person conversation that is already taking place around this devastating event, uh, which our children may engage in, hear, see, or repeat. Let's make sure Batavia Schools will not tolerate hate in response to catastrophe. I hope for most of us, it's been a soft and gentle landing on a new school year. For anyone struggling to feel held, heard, seen, and free, I am in solidarity with you, and I carry with me an unwavering hope that this school district and the greater Batavia community will come together for the greatest good in the best and worst of times. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Uh, just going to say, um, on, I'd like to commend, uh, the staff. I, I got to be witness to kind of the immediate reaction in emails that were kind of going back and forth before that could be informed, and just continual reminders about, um, kind of really pacing kind of the focus on those affected students, getting things lined up for them, getting staff ready, getting people knowledgeable with what they needed to do. So I commend, you know, Superintendent Kim and the principals involved, and the, all the staff that tried to queue up those, um, resources for, uh, anyone that would really need that, most particularly the families directly involved and anybody else in the near area. Other than that, just, I really, uh, look forward to this new year. I think there's a lot of good things. I think that we're tracking a lot of good, uh, information that I would like to see how, and I look forward to seeing how that evolves, and I look forward to working with you all on another school year for Batavia School District. So, thank you, um, and we are moving into a closed session next. My notes, if I can, if I can move them away. So we will be adjourning, there are no, uh, closed, there's no board action after this, so people could.
Stay or go ask the question.
Uh, but I would, um, entertain a, the board will go into closed session, will not have any action after the closed items. You're welcome to stay here if you like, but if you leave, we'd like to thank you for coming out this evening. And the time is nine forty-four, and I will entertain a motion to move to closed session, as allowed under the Open Meetings Act for the Purpose of Exceptions, five ILCS one twenty slash two C and two. So moved by Raquel.
Second.
Second by Katie. Is this a roll call vote? I can't remember. Thank you.
Yes.
Arlandu?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
Basicki?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for those who came.